Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Lawrence-Douglas County Joint Metropolitan Planning Commission Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 26th. And to go over the rules of the meeting, I'm going to turn it over to Becky Pepper.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Please silence your cellphones to minimize distraction during the meeting. When the Chair calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the Raise Hand function to indicate they wish to speak during public comment. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn off and mute or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format for accessing and participating in this meeting is in-person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel or Cable Channel 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, so we have a full plate today. So I'm going to try to do my part to keep the meeting moving, and I hope you all will do your part. All right, with that being said, do we have any questions on the minutes from last meeting?
I don't have a question, but would you divide the vote?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So let's vote on February 24th. Does anybody have any concerns, questions? Could I get a motion? If not...
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, could I get a motion for the second one if there isn't any discussion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Abstain, please.
You abstain. Gary, you abstain. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, two abstains. All right, committee reports, do we have any, anything? Okay, nothing. Jeff, any written communications from the public?
All written communications received by the deadline were included as part of your packet.
Thank you. Any written communications from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
None this evening.
Any written action of waiver requests, determinations made by the city engineer?
Also none.
Commissioners, any disclosure of ex parte communications?
I met with Phil and Peggy Engelhardt for item number seven. Their concerns are in the packet.
Thank you. Anybody else? I also, go ahead, sorry.
I received an email from them, exchanged communication, but was never able to meet with them.
The same?
Yes, and I believe everything is also in the packet.
I also met with Phil and Peggy Engelhardt, and I also met with Corby Rust. So that's mine. Okay, all right. And any declaration of abstentions from specific items? I don't see any. Is there anybody here in the room that wants to make public comment about an item not on today's agenda? If all your comments are going to be related to, or your feedbacks related to stuff on tonight's agenda, we're going to proceed with our regular agenda. With that being said, I'm going to ask the commission if it's okay if we move the last item, the miscellaneous item, item number F1, I think is what it is. If we can take that first, do you guys have any concerns or, it seems like we can get that done, get Ellie out of here, and so, are we okay with that? Okay, so Ellie, you're up.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Ellie Mullins, planner. This first item is a variance request from the right-of-way width standards for local streets as required by the subdivision design standards. This variance request is related to the minor subdivision Babcocks Enlarged Edition Third Platte, which proposes to reconfigure two full lots and one partial lot into three new lots at the corner of East 16th Street and New Hampshire Street. East 16th Street is a local street requiring a minimum of 60 feet of right-of-way width. The existing width is 45 feet. The standards require that half of the necessary right-of-way be dedicated through the subdivision process, or a variance shall be sought. The applicant requests a variance from this requirement and asks to maintain the existing platted right-of-way along East 16th Street. Minor subdivisions are reviewed administratively, however, planning commission approval is required for variances from the subdivision design standards. The city engineer is supportive of maintaining the existing width, as the street maintains the 45-foot width along adjacent blocks, and there is no plan to expand the street. Staff concluded that the proposed variance meets all three of the approval criteria listed in Section 2813G of the subdivision regulations. Discussion of the criteria was included in tonight's packet. Based on the findings presented in the variance memo, staff recommends approving the variance request. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is in the room tonight.
Thank you, Ellie. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects, since you were nice enough to move it to the first item, I have nothing to say. Happy to answer any questions if you have any, but we appreciate it, and appreciate you guys getting it on the agenda tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll come back to you if we have questions.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that has a question on this item? If not, public comment. Yeah, public comment. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission and see if you guys have any questions for the applicant or for Ellie.
Make a motion?
Please.
Move approval of variance requested for minor subdivision Platte 25-0002 to allow reduced right-of-way width to 45 feet proportion of East 16th Street adjacent 1601 New Hampshire Street, as shown on the proposed Babcocks Enlarged Edition Third Platte drawing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? If not, I'm going to call it for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Is there anybody online that I should be looking at, Becky, as far as either, you know, just catch me if I'm...
Right, there's no Commissioners online, and I keep an eye out for public comment.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to agenda item number one, for the regular item, and is that Avery, or who's presenting number one?
Mary Miller.
Oh, Mary Miller, sorry.
It's okay with the commission, we might hold on that one. Staff isn't currently available for that item. We'll see if we can make them available.
So Jeff, does that mean that, are they all tied, or is that just by, that's tied to items two and three?
No, that one, that one stands alone on its...
Oh, that one, this one is just alone?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll work to see if staff is available for that.
Okay. So item number two? Who's item number, is that Avery?
Two, three, and four go together.
Two, three, and four go together, okay.
Just for the commission's awareness, items two, three, four, and five are all related to the same project.
Thank you. There's one presentation, or two, three, four, okay.
Give me just one second to get my presentation pulled out. Good evening again. My name is Avery Kerner, and I'm a planner with the Planning Office. The next several items before you, as mentioned, are all related to one project, and that's for the Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Hope Project, which is an affordable housing project proposed at 909 and 913 Tennessee Street. This redevelopment proposal includes a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning request, and a preliminary development plan application. Also before you this evening with this project is a variance request from the subdivision design standards for the minimum alley right-of-way width, which is related to an associated application for a minor subdivision and replat, which is an administrative review So this is a location map of where the property is, to give you an idea of where we're looking at within the city of Lawrence. This is just a little bit northeast of the football stadium, KU's football stadium, along the West Street, West Ninth Street commercial corridor. This is a zoning map of the area, showing the existing zoning of the property and surrounding area. And I guess I should start by saying I'm going to give just a little bit of context for the area before I dive into each of the different applications and staff review of those individual applications. So, back to the zoning map, the property is currently zoned CS Commercial Strip District, and is surrounded by Commercial Strip District to the northeast and west of the property. To the south, there is RSO, which district, which is a single residential dwelling, single dwelling residential office district. And then to the southeast and southwest are RM32 and then RMO, which are multi-dwelling residential districts, higher-density multi-dwelling residential districts. The property is also, these properties are also located within the Oriad Neighborhood Design Overlay District, Urban Conservation Overlay District, which is denoted by the color blue and red here on the map. This is a land use map that shows the land use for the property and surrounding areas. As you can see, the surrounding land uses include a mix of commercial uses, institutional uses, single and multifamily residential. So the properties are also located within the Oriad, as mentioned, are located within the Oriad Neighborhood Design Conservation Overlay District, and within the historic context area of two locally listed landmarks. So the plans for this new development require additional design review for compliance with the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines and the standards and design criteria in Chapter 22 of the City Code for the Conservation of Historic Resources. Because of the scope of the project and the work proposed, there are several elements of this project that required the Historic Resources Commission's approval. A separate design review application was submitted by the applicant, and that design review application, as well as the preliminary development plan application and rezoning request, were forwarded to the Historic Resources Commission on February 20th, so that they could review those items in accordance with the applicable standards and guidelines for the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines and Chapter 22 of the City Code. The Historic Resources Commission approved the project, subject to the condition that the applicant worked with staff to finalize certain design elements of their plans, specifically related to some of the stone cladding on the exterior of the structure, and then the size and bulk of the front porch. The Historic Resources Commission also voted to forward a recommendation of approval for the preliminary development plan and the rezoning request to the Planning Commission and City Commission. So in addition to being within the Oriad Neighborhood Urban Conservation Overlay District, these properties are also within the Oriad Neighborhood Plan, which takes us into the first application that is before you this evening for the project, which is a comprehensive plan amendment. So the proposed redevelopment does not comply with the future land use recommendations in the long-range neighborhood plan for the area, which is the Oriad Neighborhood Plan. So an application for a comprehensive plan amendment has been submitted. The only change proposed with the Oriad Neighborhood Plan is to the future land use map, which you can see here on the screen. The plan currently recommends the neighborhood commercial center use for the property, and the applicant is proposing to change the use designation to high-density residential to align the plan with the development proposal for the property, which proposes only residential units. The neighborhood commercial center use is intended to allow for retail and service uses, and there are residential uses that are allowed under that designation, but the number of residential units that could be developed is limited by the zoning, the CS zoning of the property, and the use standards of the Land Development Code, which require that multi-dwelling structures be constructed as part of a mixed-use project where at least 50% of the floor area is dedicated to non-residential uses. These are the questions used to review comprehensive plan amendments, and I will just walk through a few of these, but they are discussed in more detail within the staff report in tonight's So for the first criteria, it asks if the proposed amendment addresses or results from changed circumstances or unforeseen conditions at the time that the plan was adopted. So these properties are located along the southern boundary of the West Ninth Street Commercial District, but they do not front West Ninth Street. It's unclear why these properties were included in the neighborhood commercial center use designation, or the exact reasons behind that delineation between the commercial center use district and the medium-density residential use to the, to the south. But it's possible that the plan considered the potential for these properties to be consolidated into a larger lot for commercial redevelopment at some point in the distant future. So even though these properties have yet to be redeveloped for commercial use, there could still be the potential for commercial redevelopment of the properties at some point in the future, which would conform to the plan's current use designation. That being said, it seems unlikely that these properties would be redeveloped for commercial use anytime in the near future, given the ownership of the property and the continued use of the four-plex at 913 Tennessee Street, which is being used to provide affordable housing. And as mentioned in the report, one of the unforeseen conditions that the plan could not have completely anticipated at the time of its adoption is the current housing crisis and the community's current need for affordable housing, and also partnerships like the one between Ninth Street Missionary Baptist and Family Promise, which provides supportive So the next question and criteria is whether the amendment advances a clear public purpose. This amendment is driven by a redevelopment proposal that would support 10 affordable housing units, and Plan 2040 considers affordable housing to be a public benefit, so that would advance the public purpose. But at the same time, the long-range plans both acknowledge that maintaining strong neighborhood-scale commercial areas is important and encourages that the community's existing commercial areas be retained and redeveloped, and this amendment would clearly do the opposite of that by redesignating the properties out of the neighborhood commercial center use. The next question addresses whether the amendment is consistent with long-range goals and policies of the plans. Again, the proposed amendment could in some ways further goals of the long-range, or state some of the long-range goals and policies of the plans, but it's not entirely consistent with all of the stated goals and policies. The amendment also more clearly advances the stated goals and policies in Plan 2040 than it does for the Oriad Neighborhood Plan, but that is likely because the Oriad Neighborhood Plan was adopted in 2010 under the previous comprehensive plan for the city, which was Horizon 2020. And the neighborhood plan has yet to be updated to reflect the community's vision and goals outlined in the updated comprehensive plan, Plan 2040. So, moving forward, again, I won't go into much further detail for each of the individual review criteria or review questions, because they are detailed in, are further discussed in detail in the staff report. But staff's findings, or based on staff's findings in the report, staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed amendment and forward it to the Lawrence City Commission and Douglas County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. And also, there's a separate recommendation to vote and approve and authorize the Chair to adopt and sign Planning Commission Resolution Amendment 25-0002, just type it on the screen, at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, if appropriate. One key point that I did want to mention before moving on about the comprehensive plan amendment is that while it was necessary for this application to be submitted with the redevelopment proposal, since the proposed redevelopment isn't consistent with the neighborhood plan, those applications are not contingent upon approval of this comprehensive plan amendment. So should the Planning Commission decide to not approve the comprehensive plan amendment, those other applications may still proceed. They would just proceed out of conformance with that neighborhood plan. So the next item for this project is a request to rezone 909 and 913 Tennessee Street to the RM32 District with a planned development overlay, or as it would be zoned and recognized under the 2024 Land Development Code, which will go into effect on April 1st, it would be rezoned to the R4 Residential High Density District with a planned over, planned development overlay district. And then again, the properties have that UC designation, which denotes the Urban Conservation Overlay District for the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines. And then, so this is the rezoning map for the, or the existing zoning map for the area and subject property. The current base zoning district for the properties is CS Commercial Strip District, and the request, again, is to rezone approximately .26 acres to the RM32 District to accommodate development of a high-density affordable housing project. A concept plan is typically provided with a rezoning application to demonstrate how the property would be used under the new zoning designation. In this case, the applicant is requesting to rezone to the base RM32 District with a planned development overlay, so an application for a preliminary development plan is required for concurrent review with the rezoning request. This is the preliminary development plan that has been submitted, which you can see proposes redevelopment of the two properties as one site. There is a new six-unit multi-dwelling structure proposed at 909 Tennessee Street, which is where there is currently a surface parking lot. The plan also shows that the existing four-plex at 913 Tennessee Street would be maintained and used towards providing a total of 10 units on the property. Currently, access to 909 Tennessee Street, or there is access to 909 Tennessee Street from Tennessee Street, and this plan proposes closing that access drive and reestablishing or filling in sidewalk along the existing side, to complete the existing sidewalk, and then parking for the property would be accessed from the adjacent alley. So these are the rezoning review criteria used in reviewing these types of requests. Some key points before getting into these individually, the property is owned by Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church of Lawrence, and they have partnered with Family Promise of Lawrence to allow Family Promise to use the existing four-plex for the Support of Housing Program. And this rezoning request, again, is to accommodate redevelopment of the properties to provide additional affordable housing units. The proposed RM32 District with a PD overlay allows for the development's proposed density, which would otherwise exceed the maximum density permitted in the RM32 District alone. And then again, the subject property is in the Oriad Neighborhood Plan, Planning Area, and this rezoning request does not entirely conform with the Oriad Neighborhood Plan, which is why a comprehensive plan amendment was submitted. But again, the rezoning request is not contingent upon approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, so if the CPA, or the comprehensive plan amendment, rather, is not approved, the other planning applications may still proceed. So these review criteria for the rezoning request are further discussed in a lot greater detail within the staff report, so I'll just quickly walk through some of the key takeaways from staff's review. Rezoning, for the first criteria, rezoning to the RM32 District meets many of the goals and action items within Plan 2040, but not all. Approval of the rezoning request would conflict with Plan 2040's goals to retain and to redevelop established commercial districts in the community, while furthering the plan's goals related to infill and affordable housing. For criteria two, we look at the compatibility with the zoning and land uses of nearby properties and the character of the area. The properties are adjacent to commercial zoning and land uses to the northeast and west. The property immediately, south, is zoned RSO for single-dwelling residential office district. The area also includes RMO District to the southeast and RM32 zoning to the southwest of the subject property. Staff's finding is that approval of the request is unlikely to significantly alter the character of the area. The RM32 District would allow for high-density residential uses, which are already present in the... in the neighborhood to the south, and high-density residential can be appropriate as a transition use between commercial and lower-density residential uses. And then, as previously mentioned, the property and surrounding area are also part of the Oriad Neighborhood Design Urban Conservation Overlay District, which establishes design guidelines to help ensure the compatibility of new development and redevelopment within the district. The proposed, for criteria four, the proposed RM32 district with a PD overlay does not strictly conform to the Oriad Neighborhood Plan's recommended future land use designation, which is neighborhood commercial center use, and a comprehensive plan amendment has been submitted to revise the future land use recommendation to residential high-density. And then, for, in terms of suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning regulations, the subject property is adjacent to other commercial uses and is considered to be suitable for commercial. There just haven't been any plans that have materialized to redevelop the site for commercial use, and the property owners are interested in using the property for high-density affordable housing. Under the current CS zoning, multi-dwelling structures are permitted, but only when they're constructed as part of a mixed-use development, whereas where at least 50% of the gross-floor area is dedicated and used for non-residential purposes. So the size of the property and the use standards for that current zoning district do restrict the number of units that could be constructed under that current CS Commercial Strip zoning. In terms of detrimental impacts, staff does not anticipate approval of the request to detrimentally affect nearby properties. Staff's finding is that the denial of the request is unlikely to result in any direct benefit to the public, health, safety, or welfare. But if approved, the request could benefit the community by facilitating an infill development project that would provide permanently affordable housing. The final criteria is staff's recommendation, and staff recommends approval of the request based on the findings presented in the staff report, and forwarding to the city commission with a recommendation for approval, subject to approval of the preliminary development The next item for this project is the application for a preliminary development plan. The development plan for a planned development overlay district is a two-part process. The preliminary development plan is the first part of the process and is required to be submitted for concurrent review with a rezoning request to establish the planned development overlay district. The second part of the process will be a final development plan application that the applicant will submit once the preliminary development plan is approved. The final development plan is reviewed administratively, but to be approved, it must be in general conformance with the approved preliminary development plan. The city commission is the final decision-making body for the preliminary development plan, and the planning commission is the recommending body and is responsible for reviewing the preliminary development plan with the criteria outlined in the staff report and forwarding a recommendation to the city commission. So some key, key points for the project. The development plan proposes retaining the existing four-unit multi-dwelling structure at 913 Tennessee Street and constructing a new six-unit multi-dwelling, multi-dwelling structure to replace the parking lot at 909 Tennessee Street. The project would support 10 permanently affordable housing units, which would be used by Family Promise of Lawrence for this, as part of their Supportive Housing Program. Density for the planned development, density for planned developments is calculated differently than just units per acre, so as Article 7 outlines how to calculate the net density, the density for the proposed development plan would come to about 24.6 units per acre. The plan also, again, proposes closing access along Tennessee Street, and parking for the site would be accessed off the alley. There is an administrative minor subdivision replat application for 909 and 913 Tennessee Street that proposes consolidating the lots into one. So if we go back, you can see that the preliminary development plan shows that the properties or the, yeah, the two properties and buildings would be developed, redeveloped as one site with shared amenities. They would have shared parking here along the alley, and then they would share a trash enclosure, and then also pedestrian paths through the site. Their preliminary development plan application includes two requests for modifications to the standards for planned developments in Article 7 of the Land Development Code. These modification requests are to reduce the minimum area required for planned development districts from .5 acres to .26 acres, and to reduce the amount of off-street parking required from 23 spaces to 10 spaces. Article 7 allows for the city commission to approve modifications to minimum district area and off-street parking standards when the approval of the request is warranted to support the public benefit likely to result from the proposed development. Staff is supportive of the request to modify the minimum district size of the planned development, given that the project will serve a public benefit by providing permanently affordable housing. Staff is also supportive of the applicant's request to reduce the amount of off-street parking required, based on the justification that's provided in the written request that's included within the packet this evening. Further, staff supports that request to reduce off-street parking, given that the proposed development is located in an area of the city with infrastructure and services to support alternative modes of transportation. Also included in the application is a request for alternative compliance for meeting the buffer yard standards. A Type 1 buffer yard is required along the south property line, adjacent to the RSO district, and a Type 2 buffer yard is required along the north property line, adjacent to the CS Commercial Strip District. Alternative compliance is a relief mechanism for meeting the landscaping standards when there are site conditions or safety considerations that make full compliance impossible or impractical. Plans for administrative compliance are approved administratively, and unfortunately, tonight, we do not have a final plan that has been approved or supported by staff for alternative compliance for meeting specifically that Type 2 buffer yard along the north property line. Alternative compliance is not intended to waive the landscaping standards. Rather, they are intended to provide flexibility in meeting those standards when there are site constraints for meeting full compliance. So a plan for alternative compliance should be relatively equal to or exceed traditional compliance in the amount of landscaping and the visual effect of the landscaping provided on-site. Staff recognizes that this is a key component of the site design, but there are, but if the commission finds it to be appropriate, this could be something that the applicant continues to work with staff on to come to an approvable alternative compliance, compliance plan, and that has been included by staff as a recommendation for approval of the preliminary development plan. For full transparency, or it's important to note that if the commission does find it appropriate to make that a condition of approval, any alternative compliance plan that's, that would be approved by staff would likely not provide any significant Type 2 buffer yard along that north property line because of the limited site, or the limited space along that north property line for the proposed development. So an alternative compliance plan that would be approved by staff would likely just show additional landscaping in other areas of the site to try and fulfill or satisfy those landscaping requirements. So these are the criteria used to review our preliminary development plan. Again, these are discussed in greater detail in the staff report, so I'll just walk through some of the key takeaways from staff's review. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, staff's finding is that the preliminary development plan is generally consistent with Plan 2040's land use policies for infill housing. The preliminary development plan is in general conformance with the standards and the applicability statement for planned developments in Article 7. As mentioned, this application does include two requests to modify the minimum district area of the planned development and reduce the number of off-street parking spaces required, and those standards may be modified by the city commission. Plan for alternative compliance for meeting the buffer yard standards has yet to be approved, but if found to be appropriate, that is something that staff could continue to work with applicant on addressing. The standards in Article 7 require planned developments to set aside 20% of the total site area for common open space, and 50% of the common open space that is required is required to be developed and provided for recreational use. This planned development that's proposed is much smaller than what's typical, and it will only include one property with one property owner. This exhibit shows how the planned development will comply with the common, with the standards for common open space. The recreation, or the required 20% of common open space for the planned development would be provided across three separate tracks on the property. That would include the front yard of the six-unit multi-dwelling structure and the front and rear yards of the existing four-plex. The recreational open space provided is indicated by the areas that are hatched in the front and rear yards of the existing four-unit multi-dwelling structure, and that area, as shown on the plan, will include a picnic table and children's play equipment, which satisfies the recreational aspect of that area. The property owner will maintain, will own and maintain a common open space for this property, and given the size and scale of the planned development, the amount and function of the open space provided meets, meets the code, and it's considered to be adequate. In reviewing criteria seven, staff found that the proposed density of the planned development would be measurably higher than the maximum density allowed in the RSO district to the south. However, staff does not anticipate this to adversely impact nearby properties, given that the neighborhood to the south is primarily zoned RM32 and RMO. So staff is recommending approval of the preliminary development plan, subject to several conditions, which are outlined on, on-screen. The first condition is related to addressing, well, many of these conditions are related to, to fine-tuning and addressing some of the remaining standards of Article 7 for planned developments. The first one is related to the, a six-foot sidewalk along Tennessee Street. The preliminary, or the development plan standards require that a six-foot sidewalk be provided along Tennessee Street, since it's not a local street. Staff is currently working with municipal services and operations staff to determine whether an agreement not to protest a future benefit district could be supported for this property and project. There is existing sidewalk along, along Tennessee Street adjacent to these properties, so if an agreement not to protest a future benefit district for improvement to the sidewalk is supported, that would just defer installation of a six-foot sidewalk, and it would keep the applicant from having to rip out the existing four-foot sidewalk, just to bring that sidewalk up to six feet. Submittal of a photometric plan in compliance with outdoor lighting standards is another condition, and the applicant has submitted a photometric plan just a few days back. Staff has not had a time, has not had a chance to review that, but approval, administrative approval of that is listed as a condition of approval. And then again, the administrative approval of an alternative compliance plan for meeting the buffer yard standards in accordance with the procedures for alternative compliance outlined in Section 201007, or 20, yeah, 201007 of Land Development Code. And then last, the Historic Resources Administrator's approval of revised building plans or building elevations to adequately address the Historic Resource, Resources Commission's concern with the, with the design elements for that stone cladding on the exterior of the structure and the size of the porch. So again, here is staff's recommendation, which is for approval of the preliminary development plan based on the findings presented in the staff report and subject to the conditions recommended by staff, and then forwarding a recommendation of approval to the city And then the last item for this project that's before you this evening is a variance request from the subdivision design standards. So minor subdivisions are processed administratively. However, the planning commission approval is required for variances from the subdivision design standards. The associated minor subdivision is under review, but is included in the packet for context with the variance request. No other planning action, no other planning commission action is required for this minor subdivision at this time. And on-screen, this is the proposed lot consolidation, so you can see that they're, they're just proposing to dissolve that property line that separates 909 and 913. The applicant is requesting to maintain the existing 16-foot right-of-way width for the alley that's adjacent to 909 and 913 Tennessee Street. The subject property and alley were previously platted in 1863 as part of the Oriad addition of the Lawrence Original Townsite Platte. The current subdivision design standards require a 20-foot minimum alley right-of-way width. If the variance request is approved, the width of the alley will continue to, to exist as it does today. If the variance request is denied, the applicant would be required to dedicate two additional feet of right-of-way along that west property line to comply with the review criteria for administrative approval of the minor subdivision. Staff has reviewed the three, has reviewed the request against the review criteria for variance requests from the subdivision design standards and finds that the request meets those criteria, and so staff's recommendation is to approve the variance request to reduce the minimum right-of-way width required for the alley to 16 feet, based on the findings presented in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. I also have the staff recommendation slides at the end of the presentation, so I can pull those up, once they're needed.
Thank you, Avery. That was very detailed. Thank you. Thank you. Is the, is the applicant here, Avery?
Me too.
Okay. Would you guys like to add anything to Avery's report, or?
Just like two sentences.
Yeah.
We recovered it all.
Okay.
Letitia Cole with Paul Warner Architects. I'm not gonna be able to see what I wrote here. I just wanted to say, when the Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church Committee had the idea to use their lot with the surface parking lot to build a six-plex for affordable housing for Family Promise, I don't think they had any idea how intricate and, how many applications would be, would be required to get it done for an infill affordable housing. So I just want to thank staff for their review and assistance in helping get to this point.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment on this item? Do we have any questions for Avery or the, sorry, public comment? Public comment. Please tell us your name and... And you have three minutes, but given that we have four items, I'll, that'd be some, that'd be some grace, so go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, and I, I promise to take the three minutes and hopefully no more than that, but my name is Christina Gentry, and I serve as the Affordable Housing Advisory Chair presently. I also serve, and I'll use a reference to this, which is why I'm bringing you up, but I serve as the Lawrence Community Shelter Board Directors, and so I'll be talking about a place for everyone when I'm talking to this group, as well as in recommendation for the Hope Project. So on November 13th, 2023, the Ahab recommended the city commission fund the Hope Project. The Hope Project, once completed, would provide six total units geared towards helping families with children who have lost housing. Though the board, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, recommended to fund partial award, I believe it was because of some of the things we understood today about it not being infill-ready, which was also part of our recommendations. We use that as part of, to understand how this could be a development, that it could either take a little bit of time or many years. So here we are today. So though they were asking for 850, we agreed and, and as a group to support 300,000 with the roughly... the roughly $1 million tax dollars that the Affordable Housing Advisory Board gets to understand and award for the applicants. There were also quite a few completing applicants that year, too, that were also very great additions, but personally, I really felt a kinship to this project. In a Place for Everyone, City of Lawrence and Douglas County plan to end crowded homelessness, it reads that affordable housing is a solution to homelessness. The goals of the affordable housing portion of this plan are focused on increasing the amount of affordable rental and homeownership properties and improving access to affordable housing that already exists. Our community thrives when its leaders in development take inventory of the needs of their community. And each year, the community contributes to creating more affordable housing units by buying groceries locally. So there is an engaged community of housing experts who are connected to the issue. Douglas County has prioritized building a connected community, and equity is at the forefront of these ongoing community conversations. But when popular community housing developers who apply each year for the Affordable Housing Advisory Dollars believe that, that it is appropriate for a single caregiver to reside in a one-bedroom apartment with their child and build around that design, the community developers are living in a disconnected reality from those experiencing the issue of finding affordable housing for a family. So the reality is that once you have been accepted to qualify under state requirements for receipt of housing choice vouchers, that this is only the beginning of an individual's issue. It then becomes an issue to find a homeowner who accepts the vouchers while also searching for a unit to fit your family's size. So I wanted to introduce my family because we also are Family Promise graduates. And through our Family Promise graduate journey, we, we can tell the story about the lived experience of finding affordable housing units in our community. The data will tell you what we need, but, but I think it's really important to understand that adding more additions and more Family Promise housing opportunities and units gives us the opportunity to have our children who are experiencing homelessness with their caregivers, some kind of autonomy and some kind of place to call home for themselves. So my children are here, and I don't know if we got three minutes to talk about all of them, but I want to talk about how the process worked for us while we were looking for homes. One of my children learned to drive while in the Family Promise rotation because she did donuts in the parking lot of Corpus Christi Church. Annalise, my daughter right here, celebrated her 14th birthday in the Plymouth Congregational Church. We got ready for Lawrence High School prom in the bathroom at the Udora Church, and so that was quite of a trek for us to drive over to seek those activities. But athletic activities, choir, orchestra, recitals, all of those things, and peer social engagement speak to the lived experience of trying to find affordable housing for our family in, in Lawrence. So after outside play and all of the things that my children were experiencing with their peers, it's healing to be able to close the door for a moment and just kind of be able to heal behind that. So while my kids, my children and I were going through the Family Promise rotation, we were looking for an affordable unit and for housing for ourselves and for our family. We had a housing choice voucher, and we're still looking for units. They were not available for us. So though my children were, at the end of the day, doing all the things their peers did.
I'll give you one more minute.
They were not able to do was to close the door at the end of the day. So the HOPE project is a promising housing alternative for families living in Douglas County. It speaks to support for families in all the ways families define themselves, and this project speaks hope for the children who are without a home and without a door. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hi.
Mr. Keisha Derritt, I stand twofold, in part for being the Chair of the HOPE project for Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church, and also a graduate of Family Promise. And I also serve as the Vice President of the Board of Directors for Family Promise at this time. So just a little bit, real quick, 2011, me and my children had a house fire. So we went from being regular community people to homeless, and Family Promise told, they opened up their doors, the church rotation, to allow us to be able to have some stability and be able to move around in the system and still work and still have my kids do football and everything and be in the community, but have shelter over our, our heads. It took me a little while to get back on my feet and get affordable housing. It was probably about six to seven months before I was able to, I was in a hotel, and then I was able to transition to a shared living space, and then we were able to find someone who wanted to rent with a voucher, okay? So I know all about the struggle with having affordable housing. I ended up coming over to Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church and finding out that they were partners with Family Promise already, but they weren't like involved. They own the day center that Family Promise uses for all of their office spaces and stuff, and they own the four-plex. Well, at that time, it was being rented to other people. So we, our committee at Ninth Street Missionary Baptist was will, willfully saying, let's, let's go ahead and let them use this, you know, because they need transitional housing. And then we opened up our outreach center and said, yeah, you guys can use our space to do the shelter for the winter, and you guys can use our space to hold, host the people for over a, a one month, if possible, so then they don't have to keep moving every single week to a different church. So it's been a blossoming, wonderful experience, I would say, being a part of Family Promise. And to stand here today as the Vice President of the Board of Directors, from being homeless to owning two homes now, and being able to give back and be able to write grants, to be able to get affordable housing, and having our pastor and our church congregation say, yes, we would love to support this. This is an amazing journey, and I thank you guys so very much for even considering it. We are so very delighted and grateful for you all for being able to consider this project. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Meg Pearson, and I'm the Director of Operations at Family Promise. And I just thought it would be really important to note some things around some statistics. So as you know, we are in a housing crisis, and you are all aware, it's become a priority. The city has made it a priority to try to increase the amount of affordable housing here in Douglas County. So we know it's a priority. This is our opportunity to meet that need, and I really think that it's important to note that. The other thing that I wanted to note is that because of our partnership with all of the, the people who support Family Promise, including Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church, last year, with volunteers and partnerships like Missionary Baptist Church, we actually were able to serve 980 individuals in Douglas County. 571 of those were children. So what that means is we have families who come to us who say, we are about to be unhoused or we are currently unhoused. Help us. And so with this, what we're able to do is say, yes, we can help you not only with the shelter that we've just recently opened, but now we also have these other alternatives because there is more affordable housing. There are ways for us to help to secure that. So by growing the affordable housing, by approving this project, you guys are helping the community meet its need that has been declared as a priority, and you'll be helping all of our families that come to us every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this item? Vicky, any hands raised?
Looks like Leah would like to provide some comment.
Hi, my name is Leah Roslin, and I'm the Affordable Housing Administrator for the City of Lawrence. I would like to voice my support for the request submitted by Ninth Street Missionary Baptist and Family Promise for this development of affordable housing. As Ahab Chair Christina Gentry previously noted, the city supported this project in 2024 with an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Award of $300,000. This project will provide critical affordable housing for families and children, and will help those families to escape or avoid homelessness. In my professional role, I recognize the importance of using every viable lot for affordable housing, and that developing affordable housing directly fosters economic growth, supports our local workforce and economy, and contributes directly, again, to the health of our community. But taking my professional hat off for a moment and speaking solely as a Lawrence townie, I'd like to make some observations. I see plenty of commercial space empty and available for use throughout Lawrence. Those looking for commercial space seem to have plenty of options. However, the housing market is incredibly tight for both renters and those looking to buy. We simply do not have enough housing stock to support Lawrence residents and our local workforce, and this directly drives the increase in homelessness. In addition, this area seems to be a perfect fit for new, high-density, but low-density multifamily affordable development. The development would not significantly change the character of the area, at least to just a layperson. It is already a mix of commercial and residential units. There's a parking lot that always seems to be underutilized. Every time I go there, there's plenty of spaces free. The Family Promise offices are right next to the proposed development, so staff can provide ongoing support and resources to the families, and it just seems like the perfect location for more of this specific type of housing that is so vitally needed by our community. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that this project helps to meet numerous city goals, including infill development and strong welcoming neighborhoods, KPIs five, six, and seven. But also, this housing will change the lives of multiple generations of Lorenzians, giving these children an equitable opportunity to thrive in their health, education, and in their future. I'm so very excited and supportive of this project, and I urge you to approve these requests as recommended by planning staff. Thank you all for your service and for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Leah. Thank you very much. Anybody else, Vicky, online?
No, I am not seeing any raised hands or cameras being turned on.
Anybody in the room, I'll ask one more time if anybody wants to make public comment on this item. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission. So bringing it back to the commission. Do we have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I'm kind of confused. When I went and looked at the site, it looked to me like there was still a house right up against the church, and so that house is not going to be part of this affordable housing project. Who owns that house, and are they supportive of this project?
We own the house.
Ma'am, could you, you two won't be able to hear you if you, if you're not there.
Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church owns that house. That's at 905.
Okay, yes.
Owns the 901, the 905, the 909, and 913. So the 905 is the day house that they, Family Promise actually uses for their, their offices. So they are going to be right there, present, right in the parking lot of the next, the next place.
Well, I knew that you had said that, and then I was trying to picture it, and it, it didn't square with my, my little travels today. The other thing I wanted to ask, what I wanted, perhaps this is really for the architect. I think the variance allows the alley to remain the way it is. I know there was a letter from somebody who was very concerned about the alley effect, and I don't think there's any change in the alley, and I just wanted to confirm that.
You're correct. The, the variance is just sort of a formality, I guess, I'd call it, because the alley is staying the same width, it just doesn't meet the current standards, and so we have to officially ask for a variance in order to keep it the way it is.
And I have one final question, and that is, there was a reference to a letter to property owners that was going to go out when the preliminary development plan was filed. I didn't see a copy of that letter. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I just wanted to confirm that the letter to the property owners went out as it was supposed to.
I'll answer that one, too. The letters did go out. We actually sent two letters out. We sent one, kind of our standard letter that, that goes out telling, within the radius that's required to all the neighbors. And then we also sent an additional one that went into a little further detail of people within a very close proximity, in case they wanted to meet with us independently. We met with several, we met with the property owner to the south, and I had a couple of emails with an attorney that's across the street on Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Question, question for you on, on parking?
I'll stay up here, sorry.
And, and this is just for my understanding, so the alley is where the parking is going to be?
Correct.
10 spots?
Correct.
10 spots. Is that, is that currently there, or is that proposed?
Well, there is a few spaces off the alley behind 913.
Right.
Remaining. A few of them will be reconfigured into the trash enclosure. So there's a few spaces that are existing off the alley, but the majority of the parking that's being constructed behind 909 is new.
Okay. And, and it'll be shared with neighbors? Is that?
909 and 913 are sharing all of that parking. So there's a total of 10 units and a total of 10 spaces.
Okay. And there was some, something in the staff report that residents are not likely to need cars. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes. I mean, I think part of our, you know, more, more than 10 spaces of parking is required.
Right.
But in the, in our reasoning for only providing 10 parking spaces is because with these all being units used by Family Promise, many of those, many of them do not have cars, and if they do, they're not likely to have more than one per family. It'd be just very unlikely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just a comment on the parking is that I'm just thrilled that there's, we're going to be potentially housing people ahead of cars.
Yeah.
So.
Amen.
Yes. So I, I like that part of the project, that we're replacing a parking lot.
There you go. There you go.
I could just.
Please.
Pile us a little bit. I feel like the text amendment, the rezoning request, the preliminary, the PDP and the variance request all makes sense. I find that they all meet decision criteria, and I agree with staff on their recommendations. So from a land use perspective, I, I feel pretty comfortable supporting this and just thrilled that it also lines up with such a great cause.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Anybody else comment?
I'll just say 100% concur. All four, no problem supporting. I wholeheartedly support them. I wholeheartedly support Family Promise's purpose and existence and how they have, how you spread throughout the county, not just Lawrence. I, I love it whenever you do come to Udora and we're able to do what we can there, so please keep up the work.
Thank you.
We have to make a motion anytime.
Please. And, and just to confirm, is Avery, we have four votes?
I believe five votes.
Five votes, okay.
There are two separate ones for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Okay.
One for the change, and then one for, I'm going to pull those up on.
You're, you're going to have a lot of votes. You will have two for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, you will have one for the rezoning that will have both zoning districts in play on that one, you will have three for the preliminary development plan, one for the plan, and two for the recommended modification, or excuse me, two for the modifications.
Yes, you do.
And then you will have the vote for the variance.
I'm sure Jeff will jump in.
And then a partridge for the pear tree at the very end, I think.
All right.
Happy to make a start. I, I only see, I look at an action request, and I, I don't see two separate vote items there.
Second one is listed as the adopt and sign the Planning Commission Resolution AMD 25-102. That's the second one, because it's, it's a follow-up.
So we'll start with the move approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25-0002 to Plan 2040, Chapter 8B, specific land use plans, revising the Oriet Neighborhood Plan to change the recommended future land use designation for 909 and 913 Tennessee Street from neighborhood commercial center use to high-density residential use, and forward the amendment to the City Commission and Douglas County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. And any discussion? If not, a call for a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody's opposed? Unanimous?
Mike, do you want to do a second one?
I recommend adopting and signing the Planning Commission Resolution AMD T-25-1002. I recommend adopting and signing the Planning Commission Resolution AMDT-25-1002 for this amendment.
And I just want to make a quick correction. The amendment number that's posted is incorrect. It's actually Amendment AMDT-25-0002, not 1002.
I correct myself to Amendment-25-0002.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three, vote number three?
Jeff, is there just one vote on item three?
Correct.
You want both the old code and the new code read in?
Yes, please. That's for tonight's meeting because of the new code's adoption or effective date.
It's okay with you?
Please.
I'll take a step.
Yeah.
Recommend approving request to rezone Z-24-1020, approximately .26 acres, located at 909 and 913 Tennessee Street, from CS-UC District to RM32-UC-PD District, or to the extent that the 2024 Land Development Code goes into effect on April 1st, 2025. The rezoning request would be from M-3-UC District to R-4-UC-PD District, submitted by Paul Werner Architects on behalf of Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church, and forward to the City Commission with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. And do we have a second? You second. Any discussion? All in favor?
One.
Sorry?
Sorry. One quick caveat that I don't know if it was caught, that the staff's recommendation for approval is subject to approval of the associated development plan.
Oh.
I don't know if you want to amend your.
I'd submit a friendly amendment to that motion that is subject to the approval of the neighborhood development, approval of neighborhood development plan.
The preliminary development plan.
Preliminary development plan. Thank you. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Do we need a new second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe Avery has the exact language posted for us, so if, as we keep going, we could probably double check exactly what she's posted for.
Oh, good.
Well, you say that, and I actually don't for this. For the preliminary development plan, I did not catch the two additional motions and votes that are required for those modifications to the development standards.
Jeff, before we jump in, could you articulate, or Avery, could you articulate what those, now three motions on this item?
Yes.
Yes. It would be a motion related to the preliminary development plan, and it'd be a motion for the recommendation of, and give me one second to flip screens real quick, to support recommending the reduction of the minimum district size from .5 to .26 acres, and a recommendation to modify the parking, off-street parking required from 23 spaces to 10 spaces.
And we can't just say so moved.
I really wish I could say yes.
Wait, do we need to, because I've got this language in front of me here, so.
That's the first vote, right?
So we did the first one with the 24-1007, right?
This is, we have to actually approve it.
This is the PDP.
This is the actual PDP.
The DP.
There's the minimum district right there. So did we already do that one?
No, we haven't.
I know we did all three of those.
Oh, all three of these, okay.
You got it?
Yeah. Okay. I move we approve DP 24-1007 based on the findings of fact presented in the body of the staff report, and forwarding a recommendation for approval to the City Commission subject to the following conditions. There are four conditions listed in the staff report. And so this, that's the first one.
We vote on that one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any discussion? First a second, we need a second. You second. Any discussion? No, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is, I move we support recommending approval of the request to reduce the minimum district size from .5 acres to .26 acres based on the anticipated public benefit likely to result from the approval of the development plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Last one. I move to approve the request to reduce the amount of off-street parking required from 23 spaces to 10 spaces.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So that's one item left, right? The variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion on the variance? Commissioner Munch, you haven't spoken.
Pick on you.
I'm going to pick on you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Rexrode, I approve, I move that we approve the variance request, reduce the minimum right-of-way width required for the alley to 16 feet for Hope Project Platte 24-1010, a minor subdivision replatt located at 909 and 913 Tennessee Street, based on the findings presented in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the applicant, thank you, Avery. Thank you very much. Thank you. All the best, guys. All the best. All the best.
That was a lot.
It's just terrific. Wonderful to have a project like that. And the support.
Don't jinx it, brother. Hey, Jeff, are we going back to number one now?
If the commission would like, I would recommend going back to item number one. We do have staff on the call now, so we would be able to take care of that.
Yeah, sounds good. Oh, do you want to take a break, guys? Are we good? Keep going?
We can go.
We can go? Okay.
Maybe after this one.
Maybe after this one? Okay. All right. I'll ask again. If you want to take a break, we'll take a break. Mary, is that Mary? Hey, Mary? I think you're on mute.
Oh.
Still on mute.
I apologize, I've been having some technical trouble, so I'm trying to attend through my PC, and we'll see how that works, I have to use a microphone, but my apologies.
No worries, we can hear you now.
Great. Becky is going to share my screen for me, because I can't use my work computer right now. So this item is a companion to the rezonings and the preliminary platt and the comprehensive plan amendment that was before you last month for what we call the Florid Hill subdivision in the southeast corner of Bob Billings Parkway and K10 Highway. The applicant had submitted all the rezoning applications on one form, and so one of them had to be bumped back, and that's why this one is tagging along, following behind the other rezoning applications. And so the next screen. This is the general location, if recall. The tenants-to-homeowners are planning on developing this with a variety of affordable housing, but there is a section in the northern portion, about one acre, that's being proposed for neighborhood-scale commercial uses. I'll go to the next slide, this'll show a little bit better what the rezonings are. This is the overall rezonings. Last week, you considered the RS and RM12 to the RM12 and RM12D. This month, you're considering RS7 and RM12 to that CN2 portion that's shown on the northern part. Okay, we go to the next slide. With all rezoning requests, the applicants are required to submit a concept plan so we can evaluate, would it be possible to develop their proposed, under their proposed zoning in compliance with the comprehensive plan? So this is a concept plan you saw last month, and up at the top is what's being proposed for the commercial. It's very likely there will be some changes, but this kind of gives the overall designs as how it could work. It's just a concept plan. Let me go to the next slide. So some key points with this rezoning, it's located in Tier 1, it does not require any annexation. As I mentioned, the tenants-to-homeowners plans to develop the majority of the property with affordable multi-dwelling uses, and then this one acre with neighborhood-scale commercial uses. As we mentioned last month, the rezoning request is not compliant with land use recommendations in the long-range plan. The long-range plan map, it shows the area as, it has a blue dot which shows it's recommended for commercial, but the specific land use recommendations shown in the map recommend residential. And so you did approve the comprehensive plan amendment at your meeting last month, and that's going to move on to the City Commission and the County Commission. And as Avery mentioned, to pass, it needs all three commissions' approval, but it's just one of the rezoning criteria, so the rezoning itself can move ahead even if the comprehensive plan does not get approved. Go to the next slide, please, Becky. This is the review criteria that we'll look at. I'll go through these. Since we did discuss this in detail last month, I'll, it should be, I'll go a little bit more quickly this time. But the first one, the conformance of the comprehensive plan, that will be more specific as it's very different from the other rezonings. Up the next slide, Becky? So the comprehensive plan has several action steps related to, recommendations related to neighborhood-scale commercial and commercial uses. Action step 2.1 is a general recommendation for commercial, just having compatible transitions from commercial land uses and other less intensive land uses. The land, the commercial zoning being requested here, CN2, is specifically designed to be compatible with residential development. It has a very limited range of uses, as noted in the list of uses in the staff report, and there are specific limits on some building sizes, special design characteristics. So CN2 is designed to be located adjacent to residential, but as you can see in the graphic to the right, because of the topography and the need for some drainage, there is an open space tract being proposed to the east, which would separate the multi-dwelling and the commercial from the multi-dwelling development to the east. So that would be a compatible transition. It also recommends, I'm sorry, I'm still on that last slide. Action steps regarding neighborhood commercial, it recommends we integrate them into neighborhood designs, we use them to serve surrounding neighborhoods, and that we encourage neighborhood-scale commercial uses to be integrated into residential areas. And with this concept plan, this commercial use is integrated into the residential area. It's going to share access with the adjacent multi-dwelling properties. Okay, next slide, please. Again, this is a concept plan, just showing the general layout, and that it would be possible to develop in compliance. The city engineers do not want the access point on the commercial property as far north as it is, and so one of the recommendations of the preliminary platt, one of the conditions is that that access point be moved further to the south, but otherwise, this would be a compatible development. It would transition well within the residential property it's adjacent to, and there is that open space so that the duplexes to the east, they have frontage on one road, this would prevent them from having a frontage along the rear property line and provides a buffer. So it is in compliance. It would provide an amenity to the nearby residential uses without the need to cross Bob Billings Parkway. Next slide, please. So some of the criteria, as noted, we look at is, is it compatible with the zoning and land uses in the area? The zoning in the area currently is RS7 and RM12. The rezoning request to go to RM12 and RM12D is moving through the process, but it would have residential zoning whether the rezoning requests are approved or not. To the north, there is a CN2-zoned area. It's currently developed only with a convenience store, and the development, the commercial development being proposed in this area would be more geared toward the neighborhood south of Bob Billings Parkway. So it would be compatible with the zonings existing and proposed in the area. And to the south, we have land outside of the city limits, it's zoned agricultural, but the portion that's being requested for CN2 is at the very north part of this property. Next slide, please. And then we look at, is it compatible with the character of the neighborhood? And so the neighborhood is relatively undeveloped. To the south, we have agricultural or rural land with rural residences. To the west of K10, we have rural agricultural land. To the north, we have undeveloped CN2 property, and then to the east, we have multi-dwelling development similar to what's being proposed. It's duplexes rather than the multi-dwelling structures being proposed on this property. This graphic showing the layout with the green space and the proposed new road, in staff's opinion, this would be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. As we mentioned last month, and as I mentioned earlier, the proposed use of commercial is not compatible with what's being recommended currently in the long-range plan, and as discussed, the city had been moved ahead, and in the 1990s had purchased land for a potential fire station or police station at this location, and that's why it's being recommended for public and institutional uses, as well as medium-density residential. The plans to move ahead with the fire department, a new location would be selected. Their optimization plans show this is not a suitable location for their next station, and a police station was recently developed in Western Lawrence over by Overland Drive. So there are no plans to develop this with an institutional use. So while it's not compatible with the long-range plan right now, there is a comprehensive plan amendment going through the process that would recommend commercial, and as I mentioned earlier, that small blue dot shows us as a commercial node, an area that would be appropriate for commercial node. Next slide, please. So other review criteria, what is the suitability of the property for uses in RS7, RM12 district, which is its current zoning? It would be suitable for RM12 zoning, yeah, multi-dwelling residential development could be appropriate here. It would not be well-suited for RS7 due to the fact that tenants-to-homeowners want to develop affordable housing, and the RS7 district requires each house, each dwelling to be on its own lot, and each lot to have 70 feet of frontage on a public road, and so a lot of the property would be used developing this interior road network. So it is not suitable for the RS7 district. It would be suitable for the small portion that is zoned RM12. It has not ever been developed. This property has been vacant, been used for agriculture. There is no detrimental impacts identified to nearby properties. It is a commercial use. It's meant to be compatible with adjacent residences, but there will be a buffer between the commercial use and the duplexes to the east, primarily because of the site topography, but it's a nice feature as well. And so there'd be no gain to the public safety, health, and welfare due to the denial of the application, and the hardship upon the landowner would just be that they would not be able to develop neighborhood-scale commercial to serve their proposed neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhood there south of Bob Billings Parkway. Next slide, please. So again, this is a rezoning review criteria that we went through, and the last slide will be the staff recommendation, and staff is recommending that you, next slide, please, that you forward this on to the City Commission, recommendation for approval based on the findings in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant is present today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Would the applicant like to add anything?
Hello, Aaron Gaspere, CFS. Thank you, Mary. She did a good job covering everything, so I'll be brief, kind of support the commercial node here that is shown in the comp plan. This project, and this project as a whole, is infill and in good harmony with the surrounding area, and this commercial is a good transition as you go to the south. It also maximizes and supports the affordable housing for the residential there to the south. So that's really all I had. Any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to you, thank you. Is there any, any public comment on this item? Anybody online, Becky, that you can see? Not seeing anybody. Right? Nobody? Oh, is there someone?
Leah turned on her camera, she may.
Oh, okay, yeah. Leah?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. I'm sorry, my raise-hand feature isn't working for some reason. Thank you for allowing me to make public comment again. Again, I'm Leah, as long as Affordable Housing Administrator for the City of Florence, and I would also like to voice my support for this rezoning request and give you just a tiny bit of background and the city's involvement. So this project signifies an important affordable housing project for the City of Florence and advances many city goals in strong welcoming neighborhoods, economic prosperity, safe and secure, and connected city. So the city donated this, parted this ground, or the adjacent ground to tenants-to-homeowners in 2022 with the agreement that tenants-to-homeowners would lead the development of affordable housing for low and moderate-income households, which they are doing with an inclusion of a commercial node, which they are doing. Tenants-to-homeowners entered into an exciting partnership with Florid Hill LP for the development of rental units on this track, or on the adjacent track, and Florid Hill was awarded low-income housing tax credits for the project. And Flora Hill was awarded low income housing tax credits for the project. The city further supported this project through Affordable Housing Trust Funds in 2024 with a 1.3 million grant. This project represents a really exciting public-private partnership and will provide much-needed affordable housing on the west side of Lawrence, providing economic opportunity and growth for future residents and for the city. Similar to my previous comments, this project helps to meet numerous city goals. And I urge you to approve this request as recommended by staff. I really appreciate your service and consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Do we have any questions for the applicant or for Mary?
I have a question for Leah, if I may.
Please, yeah, go ahead.
Leah, I'm a little confused. As I look back in the staff report for the June 2022 city commission agenda and the attached letter from Ms. Buford, it appears that the commercial node idea was one that came from the city manager as a way to increase the amount of revenue that could be generated by this project. And I wondered to know if all affordable housing projects had a revenue stream that they had to create as well? Or if this was unique?
Thanks for the question. No, not all affordable housing projects need to have a commercial component. This project is really exciting for the city because it was, it's really the first of this type of partnership that the city has done where we donated land that was held by the city to tenants to homeowners for the purpose of affordable housing. Since that was city-owned land, just in conversations and negotiations with the city and tenants to homeowners, it was recommended by the city manager's office that TTH would include a commercial component to help generate more tax revenue. And so they have included that as a part of their design, which is not typical for these types of projects or for the work that tenants to homeowners does. So they're really stretching themselves to be good partners with the city.
So have they committed to doing that in terms of they have to do it? Or could they develop affordable housing on this one acre instead of using it as commercial?
There's flexibility in where the commercial node is placed. Is, in the agreement right now, that is a requirement that there is a commercial component included in that development.
So the city's determined that a revenue stream is more important than the affordable housing units that could be on that same spot?
No, I wouldn't say that it's more important, just again, because that was a land that was held and owed by the City of Lawrence. I think perhaps the thought was that it would be a win-win for new commercial space as well as affordable housing.
Commissioner Eldredge, probably not in our lane.
Yeah, I just want to understand it. Because I understand that affordable housing is really important. And it seems to me that if we're doing something that diminishes the number of affordable housing units, we ought to be considering that. In which case, I think that it's something to consider whether we deny it and have it be residential.
It's a requirement from the city that they have to have a commercial node, so I don't think that matters.
I didn't understand that. I understood that it wasn't absolute, there was some flexibility there. And I think that the goal is to try to have as much affordable housing as we can as soon as we can.
Right.
And I, I just think it's unfortunate that the city would demand, say, we're going to give you this gift, but now you've got to go raise money by making it commercial. That doesn't sit well with me. I do have some other questions.
Go ahead, please.
Other people, though, but.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I think Leah's answered my question.
Okay.
And that is, Mary, Mary, my question, my next round of questions are for you. And that has to do with what kind of commercial node. And I find this troubling as well. In our current zoning system, we have CN1, CN2 and CS strip. And you have talked, I think quite eloquently, about having commercial that is tied in with residential and that is part of it and is integrated. That would fit in our CN1 zoning category. Our CN1 zoning category can't be larger than one acre. This is one acre. The largest building in it can only be 3,000 gross square feet. As opposed to CN2, which can have a building as large as 80,000 square feet. And it can be much larger in size. And CN2 is supposed to be only on one corner. We have the CN2 only on one corner in this very location. It is a neighborhood commercial center. The CN1 is called an inner neighborhood commercial center or a small neighborhood commercial center. So the other thing, if we're not going to simply deny the request in favor of affordable housing, I think the other thing we should be considering is using the CN1 zoning category because it's the one that is to be integrated into a residential zoning area. And for instance, in a CN1 category, you can have an accessory dwelling, an attached dwelling, a detached dwelling, a duplex, a manufactured home of residential design, a zero-lot dwelling, a group home dwelling, and you can have a bed and breakfast. In the CN2 category, which allows much larger buildings, you can have a multi-dwelling structure, postal and parcel services, extended general medical services, entertainment and spectacular sports. You can have participant sports. You can have a veterinarian. You can have a bar or a lounge, a brew pub, a drive-in fast-order place. These, to me, are intended in the larger sense of being on one corner and serving several neighborhoods, not as an integrated part of a residential neighborhood. It's not the kind of use that invites the neighborhood coffee shop, a place where immediate neighbors could go to be together or to do some other kind of thing. And the CN2 can have a gas station. It can have car wash. It can have equipment repair. Now, I say all of that because I think that's, that's appropriate for our current zoning code. Once April 1 comes and we go into the new land development code, CN1 and CN2 get smushed together and they are exactly the same.
Right.
So there's no longer a distinction. And the question is, once we lose that particular category that's aimed at being integrated with residential uses, how do we protect this brand-new housing development from having gas stations, car washes and bars? I think that, I think that would be a huge disappointment. In which case, at the very least, we ought to be considering the kinds of uses that would be permissible. Because they need.
Thank you. I can answer that, I think. I'll provide some information. Did you, it did ask me that? That was my question, right?
Pardon me?
You were asking me. That was my question, right?
Yeah, and so that's what I, my question to you is, given all this background, how do we protect, if it's a CN2 use? How do we make it like the existing CN1 is now? And the only one I can think of doing that is by limiting the uses that are available. I don't think the CS comparison is appropriate. I think we need to have a CN1 and CN2 comparison.
Thank you. And actually, the CN2, you know, while it has a long list of uses, if you look at the table in the staff report, many of them have an S. I should have put an S by them, which means they are only allowed after the planning commission reviews a special use permit and the city commission approves a special use permit.
That's true.
Those uses are known to be appropriate in some locations and not in all. So in order to have a gas station, it would have to come to you. In order to have a bar that's over 3,000 square feet, it would have to come to you. A car wash would have to come before you and then go on to the city commission. And there could be conditions placed on those. So that's one of the protection standards of the CN2 is some of those more intense uses, which may be appropriate in some locations, may not be another until they require approval of a special use permit. And so that's one way that there is protection of what's happening. Another one is it doesn't be under the guidelines of the tenants to homeowners. It's not, you know, they could sell it to someone else, but I think they would have conditions. So if this is their property and I believe they would want to protect their residents, whatever goes in here could be employment locations for some of their tenants. It could also be, as you mentioned, a coffee shop they could go to just to enjoy. But it could provide quite a few services. It's a small lot. And so I know they could have an 80,000-square-foot grocery store. But if they wanted to have a bar, it's limited to 3,000 square feet. There's quite a few limitations on the size of buildings. And so I think the CN2 is pretty well-limited. It's meant to be, the CN1 is meant to be just inside of a neighborhood.
Right.
Not on a street as busy as Bob Billings Parkway and a collector. You know, that's, that doesn't scream inner neighborhood to me. It says more like this is the edge of a neighborhood. Someone could drive to it. And so that's why CN2 might be more appropriate than CN1, although the uses they decide to pick may be allowed in both.
So your understanding is that tenants to homeowners is going to continue to own this and operate it? That's how the.
I don't know what the plans are. We'd have to ask them, but I would assume they'd maintain some control over it since it is located adjacent to their property. So I don't know if they intend to operate it, lease it or what. But, you know, I don't think they would just let it go without any control since it is so close to their neighborhood.
And so close to that lovely duplex neighborhood that's next door. Is there?
Jeff, go ahead, please.
Just wanted a point of clarification on that. When the CN1 and the CN2 district do not collapse into the same district in the 2025 code, what will happen is CN1 will become M1, CN2 will become M2 in the new code. So just wanted to have that for a point of detail for y'all.
Oh, they, that's, I thought they both became M2, no?
So, yeah, CN1 goes to M1 and CN2 would go to M2.
And so they get larger facilities is really one of the major things. The uses are the same, though, aren't they?
I'd have to look at the use table. I can't remember the new one off the top of my head. I know one of the conversations that we had during the course of reviewing for those districts was some of the square footages and things that we saw in the 2006 code don't really work in today's code. You can't get loans and they have some problems with mortgaging those. And so what we're seeing is a lot of places going smaller or larger depending upon what is sometimes necessary. So we worked on those kind of square footage caps a little bit to make it a little bit more what you see in today's world versus what we saw back then. But really, the, the M1 is mixed small neighborhood and the M2 is mixed large neighborhood is the way that the new code kind of takes those, puts those together.
And in the M, in the M, you can actually have residences, correct?
Correct. There is a lot more residential options that are allowed in the, in the M districts. That was one of the striving features from the steering committee and the conversations where there may be instances where a project needs to kind of flex over time. And instead of having to go through a rezoning process or have to go through a different process where residential might be compatible, it allows that kind of a fallback, if you will, to have that as an option and availability.
Thank you.
And that would be under the M1 and the M2? You said that CN1 becomes M something and CN2 becomes M something else? But the residential would be under either of those, is that correct?
Yeah, let me double check. It's, I get dangerous when I think I have it memorized and I don't. M1 and M2 have almost all the same residential allowances except for M1 allows for manufactured home community and would allow for fraternity or sorority use. And otherwise, the tables are pretty consistent. They all allow attached dwellings, detached dwellings, interior or non-ground floor dwelling, multi-unit dwelling, small lot dwelling and two-unit dwelling.
Thank you. Commissioner Rexrode.
Did you want to go, Sharon?
Just to offer a different perspective, I understand the concern about wanting to put maybe more residential affordable housing there. But one of our goals is to have mixed-use development. And what I see in this project is a number of different housing types of units, residential units, plus some commercial that is going to be designed for the residential use. Instead of having to drive all the way across town to go to do shopping or something. There, there's a potential here for facilities within the neighborhood, some commercial retail operations there that would support this neighborhood. That's how I, I see it as opposed to.
I don't disagree. And I think that CN1 would, would do that perfectly without any concern. And that, that is my only concern is that I think, I think this is such an exciting and bold development. I think that it just has to come off right. Because it, and I'm kind of amazed that tenants to homeowners is apparently going to, going to operate it and run it and be a commercial business.
Could I ask the applicant if that, about the ownership of the commercial district to speak to that?
Rebecca Buford, Executive Director of Tenants to Homeowners. Great questions. I will be the first to acknowledge we haven't had a commercial space before. So some of this is a learning curve. But our intention is to own it and to properly lease to appropriate uses. So yes, I am, I have no interest in a liquor store there at this point. So yeah, we were really intending a coffee shop, a healthcare facility, you know, like a check-in, something that really supports the residents there. And with 122 units, there's a lot of people there to support. So I think we can have several small options that are an amenity to the neighborhood. And that is our intention.
Well, that certainly makes me feel better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eldredge, thank you. Thank you.
Just pile on, pile on a little bit with the direction Sharon was going there. I, you know, the M stands for mixed use, of course, in that zoning category. And, and I can understand the, you know, the desire to protect that area somewhat. But at the same time, I wouldn't want to try to predict what that area could or should need in the way of commercial services that are out there. And I also, I get the idea that, that, you know, if there's available ground, we want to make it available for residential. The M category doesn't exclude that. But as I look at that project, I see a design that, that, gosh, we, we want to have in any new development. And I wouldn't want to take a position that says that just because it's low income, that they shouldn't also have the opportunity for a walkable neighborhood. In fact, if anything, probably just the opposite of that. I also want to be a little bit careful that the applicant that's here tonight asking us to provide this very approval. And for me, anyway, I have trouble second guessing what that should be on their behalf. They're, they're asking for this approval. And I feel like that if a decision different than what the city has built and this agreement has made is really the city's commission responsibility and not ours. Ours is a simple land use question. Does this area meet that requirement outside of all these other conditions? And for me, it clearly does. I'm excited about the other potentials of it, of course. But those are outside of the decision that I have to make tonight.
Public comment is closed. If one of the commissioners has a question, come back to you. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the rezoning request on the conditions or the.
Let me just ask, is there any more, any more questions before we do that? Any more, you have a question?
I have a question and a comment.
Go ahead, please.
First comment, I appreciate Commissioner Rexrode's commentary there. I thought that was very well-stated. I agree with all the points that you made, so thank you for that. Just a minor clarification for Mary. So in reference to the buffer strip between this development and the duplexes, to confirm, that strip is not developable in any way? Is that accurate?
Yep.
That's right. It's being plotted as a tract. There'll be, it'll be used somewhat for drainage. It'll be an open space area, you know? And I know they were considering maybe being able to put a small park up on the northern side. But there's, I don't think they planned anything for that. Mostly, it'll just stay open. Mostly it'll just stay open space. And unless they replat and make it a lot, it's unbillable.
Got it. Thank you.
Ma'am, are you a neighbor of the property?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead and ask your question, please.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Linda Har and I live on Legend Trail. And my question is, you mentioned that the zoning is going to be different starting April 1. Is that true?
We have a, a new land development code.
So why is it being voted on now if it's going to change April 1? And then we are invited to go see, which I'm very thankful of, that we're invited to go see the plans, but it's not going to be until April 7th. So why didn't we get to, the neighbors get to go and see what the plans are before this meeting on April 1st rather than later? And why is it being voted on now if it's gonna, you know, the zoning is going to be changed April 1st? I guess that's my.
Thank you for your question. We'll, yeah. Does anybody, you want to say anything, Jeff, to that?
Sure. So the zoning in place today would just convert. And so what will happen is whatever the item is today converts on April 1 to the new district. Or in the case of this one, if a property is in the rezoning process, it would convert through the process as part of the rezoning. So that's why you're seeing kind of those two motions kind of in one tonight. You'll see the old and the new, kind of capture both of those in one going. So the zoning isn't being rezoned necessarily on April 1. What happens is the zoning districts convert to their new designations on April 1.
Right.
There is a new land development code that will be applying to the entire city of Lawrence. And so there are many zoning districts that will be changed on April 1 when the new code comes in. So all across the city. And so whatever this comes in as voted on today, just like the ones last month, will all be converted to the new code on April 1 when it is enacted. So that's general across the entire city, not specific to this, to this project.
Thank you for your comment and.
I'm actually interested in the second question that she had as well. So I just wanted to, to ask the applicant, just about public notice and about meeting with people and the idea that you're going to show plans on April 7th. How is that different than what you did to prepare for this evening's meeting with the neighborhood and the public?
Yes, generally I like to have the neighborhood meeting sooner. It just worked out this way that that was between our team and, and getting all the notifications out in time and allowing time between the notification that we're not having the meeting, you know, the day after the letter gets sent out. It just worked out that April 7th was, was our first available neighborhood meeting date.
Did you have conversations with any of the neighborhood or hear back from any of the neighborhood in prep for this?
Yes, I, I actually went out and met with the neighbor to the south, Steve. I forget his last name offhand, but I went and had a conversation with him. So yes, I have met with him.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, did you want to make the motion, Commissioner Eldridge?
I would like to, thank you.
Go ahead.
I would move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone Z 241021, approximately one acre located at Bob Billings Parkway and K 10 Highway from RS 7 and RM 12 districts to CN2 district. Or to the extent that the 2024 Land Development Code goes into effect on April 1, 2025, from R2 residential low density and R3 residential medium density districts to M2 mixed large neighborhood district based on the findings presented in the staff report and forward the request to the city commission with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
And I wanted to say I don't disagree with Mr. Rexrode. And I want to make it perfectly clear that my concern was if, if this was not mandatory and if the property owner preferred to have more affordable units.
Right.
That option was provided and that we were very careful about providing integrated commercial as an appropriate way to deal with any neighborhood.
Sure.
That whether this neighborhood is low income or high income, I think it should be treated the same way. And that certainly is something that I intend to do whenever I have that opportunity. And I know that Ms. Buford is one of the most determined people I know. And she did a wonderful job getting the city to donate the land. I'm sorry it ended up being with an extraction. But as long as she's in charge and owns that land, I think it will be developed absolutely appropriately for this housing. And I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, ask for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody against? No, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary. Thank you to the applicant. Thanks to the public. Thanks for the comments. And we will go to the last item. Do you guys want to take a break?
We have two items.
Two more, oh, two more. Oh, then.
River City Church one.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. So what order do you want to do? Just stick with order, current order, number six, okay. Who's doing number six?
We have five minutes to power our noses.
Yes, please. Please, sorry, please, let's do that.
We'll take five minutes.
Five, five-minute break. Yeah, seven-minute break.
All right, we are back. And Avery, this is item number six, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Avery Kerner, and I'm a planner in the Planning Office. As the Chair mentioned, this next item before you is item six, and it's for a special use permit for an accessory school use located at 3001 Lawrence Avenue. The subject property is located in the southwest area of town, near 31st Street and Lawrence Avenue. The property is developed for a religious institution use, and the existing building is used by River City Church. This special use application, or the special use permit application, is for a request to allow Veritas Christian School to continue operating within the River City Church building as an accessory school use to the religious institution. The City Commission approved a special use permit in September 2023 to allow the accessory school use to operate out of the church building. But that special use permit is set to expire at the end of June. When the applicant went through the process for the previous special use permit, they had only planned to occupy the site temporarily while they worked through plans for a permanent location. So the expiration date that was established for that previous SUP was based on the end of their initial lease. The school's plans have since changed, so they are now seeking approval of a new special use permit to continue operating on-site past June 30th without a set expiration date. The current special use permit application proposes only one minor physical change to the site, which is to install additional short-term bicycle parking at the front entrance of the building. No other physical changes to the site or the exterior facade of the building are proposed. The City Commission is the final decision-making body on special use requests, and the Planning Commission is the recommending body and is responsible for reviewing such requests in accordance with the review and decision-making criteria that have been outlined in the staff report. Staff's review and analysis of the request is also outlined in the staff report. And based on the findings in the staff report, staff is of the opinion that the proposed accessory school use is compatible with the surrounding land uses and does not anticipate any adverse impacts to result from continuing operation of the school as an accessory use to the religious institution. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit, subject to the conditions of approval that are listed on the screen and in the staff report. The first condition of approval that's listed was for the applicant to make a minor revision to the bike rack exhibit to demonstrate the same number of new bicycle parking spaces that are proposed. The applicant has done that and submitted the revised plan, so that first condition has been resolved. That revision just didn't make it into tonight's packet. The other two conditions are to restrict operation of the accessory school use to the interior of the existing building and playground area, and to assert that the approval of the special, or approval of the school use as an accessory use is ultimately contingent on the primary use, that is, the religious institution maintaining its status as a registered legal nonconforming use. If the nonconforming use status is lost for the religious institution in any of the ways that are outlined in the Land Development Code, then the school would not be permitted to continue operating alone as an accessory use. Additional reviews, if the, if the school were wanting to maintain occupancy of the site, that would just require additional review for compliance with the Land Development Code. So with that, or again, staff, staff's recommendation is to approve the special use permit UP 25-0001 to allow for the accessory school use to continue at 3001 Lawrence Avenue, based on the findings presented in the staff report and subject to the conditions recommended by staff, and forwarding a recommendation of approval to the City Commission. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Avery. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Aaron Gaspers, CFS Engineers. Yeah, I'll be brief. Veritas has operated here for three years and has a happy partnership with River City Church, and this would make sure that that continues, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? No hands, right, Becky?
I'm not seeing anyone with a raised hand. If anyone is having an issue with their raised hand function not working, you can turn on your camera if you'd wish to speak.
Not seeing anybody. I'm going to bring it back to the Commission. Do we have any questions for Avery or the applicant? Please.
I have a question for Avery. I expect, I know the answer, but I still want to ask. To confirm, have there been any complaints or inquiries with respect to compliance with respect to the previous, the existing special use permit?
As far as I'm aware, there have not been any complaints registered or logged in the, in our system that we track public inquiries for. The previous special use request, I did have a comment, or a member of the neighborhood reached out with some concerns about parking and the traffic that could be generated by the school use. For this special use permit application, I did not receive any of those similar calls. I think that there's been one written communication submitted by, by the public, and that's included in the packet, but I believe that was in support of the request.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Commissioner, that's my neighborhood, and it's fine.
Okay. Are you authorized to speak on? Public comment is closed.
Make a motion.
Oh, please, please, please.
Move approval of special use permit UP-25-0001 to allow an accessory school use to continue at 3001 Lawrence Avenue, based on the findings presented in the staff report, and subject to the conditions recommended by staff, and forward a recommendation of approval to City Commission.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any seconds, all right. And any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Nobody against, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Avery. All right, to the last item, right?
Last one.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Catherine Reek, one of the planners. And I'm going to present another zoning request before you this evening. Kurt is loading up my PowerPoint here. All right. So this request is rezoning at Third and Michigan. This is for Z 25-0001. So this is the general area in the city that we're talking about. It's just north of Sixth Street in the Pinky neighborhood. This is what we're looking at as far as the area layout. This is, the teal box here is the highlighted area for the zoning request. It's kind of an L-shaped parcel. The top portion, or the north portion of the parcel, is the one that's being requested to be rezoned. Before we get into the zoning in the area, I'll give you kind of a summary here of why the applicant is proposing this request. This particular parcel has two different zoning designations on it. It has RS7 on the north portion and RM24 on the southern portion. The applicant is requesting to unify that zoning district with the RM24 that exists across the entire parcel to facilitate the development of a multi-dwelling use. Zoning in the area here, as you can see, this L shape kind of sits, you'll see in another image later in the slide, adjacent to a large portion of RM24, and is also adjacent to some RS7, RS5, the hospital district. And there's also some RMO and RM12 in this general area for this. Land uses in the area, we'll discuss this in some of the criteria points. The land use in the area is primarily residential. There is a scattering of multifamily that has been developed in this RM24 district that the property kind of resides in. The brown areas are the multifamily dwelling uses, or the orangish-brown. The yellow is the primary, or the residential area, so the single dwelling residential uses. Blue is hospital, and red is commercial. So it kind of gives you a layout of what this general area is looking like as far as land use goes. So the key points for this particular request, as I mentioned, the property is split-zoned. It has RS7 district across the top portion or the north portion, and RM24 district on the southern portion. It's located in Tier One of the urban growth area, and it is not located in a approved area or sector plan. The applicant wishes to rezone the RS7 portion to the RM24 portion to kind of facilitate that multi-dwelling use development. The property is not located in a regulatory flat plane, nor does it contain any environmentally sensitive lands as defined in Section 2810. And this parcel is a platted lot of record. But to facilitate the development across the whole parcel for multi-dwelling, they do need a rezoning before pulling any site plans or building permit applications. An administrative site plan must be submitted if the rezoning request is approved, and then any building permits related to the development would also need to be submitted after any rezoning if it were approved. And this, again, is just going over those review criteria that we use when analyzing a zoning request. These are the eight plus the staff recommendation. And I go through some of these briefly. Conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff feels that the rezoning would allow for some future development if the entire parcel was redeveloped with a multi-dwelling use. The area has multiple zoning designations, which include the RS5, RS7, and RM24, hospital, and then commercial uses to the south along Sixth Street. The, some of the goals, as stated in that comprehensive plan, is to facilitate a mix of different types of dwelling units and different densities of dwelling units. And this is an opportunity to unify a zoning district across a property and have that multi-use or multi-types of dwelling units in this neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood, again, as I mentioned, there is a large swath of reasoning. I'm going to flip to this other slide here for a second. There's a large swath of that RM24 located in this area. And this portion of the property kind of fits in that top corner of that swath of RM24. The uses, however, in the area are not all multi-dwelling. If we go back to the use map here, it shows that primarily in this area is developed as single dwelling. That doesn't mean that the whole area couldn't future develop as multi-dwelling units because this whole area is already RM24. And there is already a scattering of multi-dwelling kind of interspersed throughout the neighborhood as indicated that. So staff does feel that it does kind of conform to the comprehensive plan and character of the neighborhood. The RM24 can, can meet those criteria points as outlined in the staff report. And this, again, is a unique situation where the property is already partially in the RM24 district. So the applicant does have the opportunity to request a rezoning to unify that zoning designation across the property. And they are choosing to request the RM24. Back to the key points. Or the criteria points. So staff has gone through all the criteria points. Suitability of the property for the uses to which it has been restricted under existing zoning regulations. Currently, this property has not been developed. It is still suited for the uses to which it is restricted, meaning it could develop as RS7, or it could develop as RM24, because both zoning districts reside on that property. The challenge for any property that is split-zoned is that there are not uniform dimensional standards that can be overlaid on the property. Half, or portion, a portion of the property would be under the RM24 dimensional standards, and the other portion under the RS7. So that does make it a challenge for development to occur. The extent to which the rezoning would detrimentally affect nearby properties. Staff did not find that there were any potential detrimental effects for the properties, and so staff did feel, feel that it could meet this criteria point as well. And then the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and wear felt due to denial of the application as compared to that hardship imposed on the landowner, if any, as a result of denial of the application. And staff, again, felt that this, this could be met with this potential rezoning, particularly given that the zoning already exists on the property, and so it's a unification of the zoning designation. To kind of go over the uses that are, the difference between a single dwelling designation and a multi-dwelling designation. The single dwelling designations are geared towards those detached dwellings or similar, whereas multi-dwelling is geared towards multi-unit or apartment-type dwelling and similar uses. So this is just an outline of what the difference is currently permitted on the site now, and how they would be restricted if one or the other designation was not there. This is the rezoning area that's in question. This is the total L shape, and then the rezoning area is just the RS7, and rezoning designations extend to the center line of the right-of-way. So this kind of gives you an idea of what the overall area of that rezoning request is. And that brings us back to this slide to show you how that fits in with the existing zoning that is on this neighborhood already, and how this particular request for the RM24 and unifying that zoning designation across that does kind of fit in with the RM24 that is already to the west and south of this particular property. It is an edge property. There are edge properties along all of boundaries of any zoning district. So that is a consideration, whether or not that creates a transition point between existing zoning designations, which it could. And then just to the, the discussion points that we might want to get into here is whether the, you know, the property currently resides in those two zoning districts, and rezoning it to one district can create that uniform dimensional standard, so over the property. The proposed rezoning was submitted to allow for the development of multi-dwelling structure with approximately 24 dwelling units. This is a 1.04 approximately size acre parcel, so they would, with that area, be permitted to, to potentially develop with 24 dwelling units, since it's RM24. That's 24 dwelling units per acre. And then the criteria for rezoning, which we may want to discuss, if you have one or two of those criteria you want to talk about. We can discuss those. The density comparison for the two districts. Currently, the RM24, as I mentioned, at 1.04 acres would permit a 24 dwelling units per acre development. And since they have that acre, they could potentially put 24 dwelling units on the site. The concept plan that was submitted with this particular application does outline that it would be intended for 24 dwelling units, 12 of each type, a single bedroom and two-bedroom units. And then the RS7, the difference there is that at 1.04 acres, that would be one dwelling unit per 7,000 square feet, so they could potentially get six single detached dwelling units. Or if they're going for the double-density bonus in our current code for affordable housing, they could potentially get, that says 13, but it should say 12. It did not, did not catch it. It should say 12 there. So that would be 12. And then we received quite a few communications on this one. They are all in the packet. We also met with a couple of the neighbors. Staff went over timelines for the process and tried to answer questions that they may have for the, for the review criteria and what was actually going to potentially happen on the site. All of those communications are in the packet, and so I would be happy to, you know, stand for any questions once we're done here. And staff is recommending approval, or recommending that you recommend approval to the City Commission based on the findings in the staff report.
Thanks, Catherine. Thank you. And would the applicant like to say anything?
Hi, Commissioner. Corby Rust, Land Plan Engineering. Kind of reiterate a few things Catherine had said. About a third of the property now is RS7, or two-thirds, rather, and about a third is RM24. We're seeking to make it all RM24. You may remember, we were here before trying to, asking for RM32 zoning, which was honestly too dense, and that site plan would have included a three-story building, probably 32 units. And so this is RM24, two-story apartment building, 24 units, 12 one-bedroom, 12 two-bedroom. The building is actually designed specific for the site, so as the site's L-shaped, this is L-shaped. It's kind of, since I've already basically done a site plan, I can, I can elaborate a little bit on, on a lot of the development and design ideas that go along with this. It is a very attractive building that is designed for the slot. So far as it lays out, there are 32 off-street parking stalls for the 24 units, with additional street parking on Florida and on Third Street. I've designed it to eliminate access to Michigan Street, as it's the busier of the three streets. And so it would take access on the north from Third and on the west from Florida Street. And so the parking lot makes a nice little L, so everybody kind of stays in that area that's traveling to and from this complex. Also, 38% of the property is landscaped green space. So basically, every edge of the property has a landscaped area. It has the necessary buffer yards. It has, in the northeast corner, it has a bio-retention rain garden, which are, are very nice. Not a concrete drainage structure, but a planted green space to improve water quality before it hits the city system. And many of the existing trees get to be preserved just by the way it lays out. Additionally, the area has connectivity and walkability to the Sixth Street commercial corridor. Is, kind of looking today, I like to kind of see what I'm up against. As you zoom out on GIS, you see that probably a square mile or even bigger around there is quite, you saw the RM24 district, but within that, and even outside of it, it's quite a mix of multifamily and single-family residences. And so this really kind of fits into everything going on around it. I think it brings a vibrant newly constructed building to a well-established neighborhood. And in this case, you know, like any well-established neighborhood like mine, you get some eh, and you get some uh. And the property, just to the south of this, is a uh. And so when I talk to a few of the neighbors, when I post signs, I get asked a lot of questions. I didn't receive any, any calls on this one, but posting signs a few times, I got to speak with a few neighbors, and it seems like it was positive, for the most part, and curious, and a positive response. It was, it seemed like they were just more negative about the house just to the south, but there was more concerns about that than, than the proposed, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any public comment on this item?
Hello, good evening. My name is Michael Allman, speaking, representing myself tonight. I noticed that the applicant mentioned in the application that the neighborhood is a mix of single-family RS7 or R2 and multifamily R24 or R4. He owns a parcel that is part of both, apparently. And with the existing code, the old code, the developer has to jump one way or the other. They have to go with multifamily on a project or single-family unless they did a planned development, which was rarely used. With the new code, not only is mixed-use, mixed-housing types allowed, but it's encouraged. So if, if on the macro scale, the neighborhood is a mix of higher density and lower density, then maybe on the micro scale, that project should do the same, be a mix. And the new code does exactly that, recommends mixed housing types, mixed use. So instead of maximizing the number of units and maximizing the profit, that's, that's, that's not required anymore. You don't, I mean, if the new code, if we wanted to have maximum density, then we would have come up with the residential district. have come up with the residential district's R five. We just maximize everything, R five. But no, we didn't do that with the new code. It's a mix of levels of density. And so just as the neighborhood is that mix, seems like this whole project should be the same kind of mix. Keep the R two as well as the R four and make that a project. Thank you.
Hello, I'm William McGinnis. I live Catty Corner from this project. I've lived there for about seven years. I've talked to most of the neighbors, if not all. The, I don't know who he talked to that agreed with his project, but most of the people I've talked to are really not happy with this project. This is an old-school neighborhood where kids learn to ride bikes on the street. If you guys are concerned about safety and health, that's where the kids are. You see women pushing their strollers, people walking their dogs. That's the kind of neighborhood where we live at. There are no sidewalks, for one thing, on Florida Street. And on Third Street, there are a few sidewalks. For the most part, there are no sidewalks. So people do have to walk on the street. People play on the street. You guys are going to be changing that. This is not going to be a place where kids can play on the street anymore. You know, with these many cars coming in and out, it's going to be dangerous if kids are on the street. So I beg you to think about it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Engelhardt, and I live within 200 feet of the parcel in question. And I'm here to ask you to deny this request. And the reason is that the zoning designation is for greater density than what is found in the area. It's going to be too dense. And while changing the label to RM twenty-four makes a tidy map of zoning labels, it doesn't match the predominant land use. What you see in the area is single-family and duplex structures or forms. And so that one map that had all the yellow is the lower density of single-family and The current land use, I feel, is not given enough weight in considering this change. Using the criteria to evaluate it, one finds that RM twenty-four is not compatible in density to what's on the ground, not compatible in form, not compatible in pattern or character of what has been built. And these criteria, I understand, are set forth to protect the value of the area and its quality of life. And so I argue that RM twenty-four threatens both value and quality of life, which in turn causes harm to the area. Harm is caused by changing housing values of the current structure, by decreasing safety and livability due to increases in traffic and congestion, and by increasing noise and light pollution. The idea that this whole area is RM twenty-four and can be further developed as such may look good to you on paper, but it is not desired by the residents, and it is not what's on the ground. So if this request is granted, it will forever change the nature of this modest, established neighborhood. Don't trade an area with attainable housing and the potential to add modest, a modest, sensible number of units for the offering of multi-unit complexes that don't fit the current land use or the character of the area. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Following my lovely wife, Phil Engelhardt, Pinckney resident within 200 feet. I'm an advocate for the value to the community of modest neighborhoods. Spent most of my life, 40 years plus, living, working, studying modest neighborhoods. Start with a fact. In the post-World War II era, the burdens imposed by redevelopment have fallen heavily on modest neighborhoods. We know this. It's not rocket science. I mean, the expressways are the most classic examples, Strawberry Hill, Midtown, Kansas City. You can go on across the country, okay? Disproportionately fallen on modest neighborhoods. My view is, the present application is just another small example, albeit one close to home, of the potential burden being imposed by the inappropriate scale development on modest neighborhoods. You know, briefly, if the parcels, you know, developed R four density, you know, in the medium-time scale, say the next three to 10 years, the transition path for the neighborhood will most likely involve significant conversion of owner-occupied, single-family housing units to rental units. It's the familiar capital equity thing that's going all over the country right now, and there's really no end in sight, okay? But we need to do something a little different. You know, what's proposed here is what I call short-term profit maximizing approach to development. It's the standard post-World War II approach. Lawrence needs to do something different. You know, what I've been advocating with very, very little success is what I call sensible infill density. What that implies in the present context is development at a scale compatible with the existing build environment and the supporting infrastructure. It adds value, in the long run, it'll add value not only to the immediate neighborhood but to the larger community. I know this is just one small example, but you repeat this daggone thing 12 or 15 times across modest neighborhoods, and you'll have a different Lawrence. I don't, whatever. I'm not going to make a, I have my own value judgment. I won't spit it out. So, you know, this can be done right. Everybody's interests can be served with sensible infill development. We need to talk. The developer needs to talk with the neighborhood before the conceptual plan comes in. Needs to talk with the city before the conceptual plan comes in. You know, I get carried away. I got, shoot, I got 10 seconds. Thank you for your time. Hopefully you'll consider those comments.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Anybody online? Peggy?
Brittany Hall has her hand raised.
All right, Brittany, please. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I was actually at City Hall earlier today, but I needed to get home to get my son to bed because it was way past his bedtime. So I am in agreement with all of my neighbors. I live on the west side of this property, and I do not agree with this development. I do believe in affordable housing for our families, especially our single parents, such as myself, but I do not believe in doing this development for many reasons. It's not cohesive with the neighborhood. It does not commit to the character that we have. This is an old neighborhood that I proudly live in, and I just strongly disagree. It's going to ruin some wildlife and our natural habitats, and there are no sidewalks. I am one of those families where I finally feel safe enough to let my son play in the front yard with very much supervision, but also to let him explore with his soccer goal and to be a kid like we were once and to not have to have that worry. But now with adding more cars and population into this, it's not the right neighborhood for this building, and I think this needs to be somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hand raises.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Who wants to?
Sure. I think I'll offer the applicant.
Yeah, would the, sorry, would the applicant like to respond to? Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Just briefly, it, it's just one acre of land, so kind of responding to some of these comments, one acre of land is really hard for mixed use. It's just not very much. And you say, well, you're putting 24 units on it. Well, you saw earlier, we could get close to that. Traffic-wise, we can't ignore that there's a giant medical center directly across Michigan, right? And Michigan's a high-traffic street. And so I say only 24 units because I've been before you with a lot more than that, and I, you know, I kind of get the traffic and the traffic studies, and we have that talk. 24 units doesn't add that much traffic, that much difference. And I would argue that the character of the neighborhood is exactly this mixed use. And so if we're talking on mixed use on a small scale, we're talking mixed use on a bigger scale here, and I would say it does fit the character of the neighborhood as you pan back. Maybe not right there, but as you kind of look around. And interesting fact that I learned is apartments are not a short-term investment because it's about $250,000 a door now to build them, and so it becomes a long-term investment. So that's all I'll add. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so no more public comment, it looks like. I'm going to bring it back. Who would like to start us off? Any questions?
I just want a clarification. We're only talking about the rezoning, right? We're not talking about any specific project that may go on there.
That's correct. Catherine, that's correct, right?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, they do have, with all rezonings, they have to provide a concept plan, so you do know what the concept is when you're looking at it, but this is just the land use and the rezoning application, yes.
Could I ask a question on density?
Please, please.
I should know this off the top of my head. What is the max density in R two for an acre? Is it six? I think it was six and minimum four, if I remember right.
Minimum four, maximum six units per acre.
And does that factor in duplex or ADU? You can go, you can go a little bit more dense with ADU, I think. Sorry, I should know this.
No worries. We're also learning it as we're going to, yes, you can do ADUs. They do, instances will come into the density calculation, but at certain points, they also come out of the calculation.
Yeah.
Depends on where that threshold's at for it.
Same true with duplex by right.
Duplex would count period into the density calculation.
Okay, right. Then you've got the affordable multiplier as a separate thing.
Correct.
Big A.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I just have some observations because I toured around the area for a bit. And I have to say, I'm concerned about the RM twenty-four rezoning there, because when you look at the neighborhood, it is single-family residential duplex for the majority of that area. You saw on that map with the yellow and the brown, those multifamily dwellings units were pretty far from this. And when I think about the previous project that we just talked about on Tennessee Street, that RM thirty-two made sense in that context, where it was surrounded by multifamily dwellings of that size. Here in this location, even though it's RM twenty-four, when you look around that area, there really is nothing there close by. That's dense. Now, if this was a proposal for an RM twelve or what would be an R three coming through, then that transition wouldn't be so drastic to me. But it feels a little bit much for me, and actually, one of my big concerns, as a couple people mentioned, was that there are no sidewalks in this area. There's no sidewalks on Third or Florida, Third, or Michigan. I mean, sorry, not Michigan, Minnesota on the other side. And so that is a concern to me with adding that many units on there, is that there are no sidewalks to get off the street in that area. So those are my observations.
Anybody else have a thought, comment? Go ahead.
I have some questions for Catherine. Catherine, in October, when there was the proposal for the RM thirty-two, the staff recommended denial, principally because it was just too big for the, within the character of this area. I hope that's an accurate summary of the.
I think that's fairly, it was the highest density in the code at the time.
So when we get to the new land development code, what does RM thirty-two become?
It does merge into R four, but the difference, I think, the difference in staff's recommendation is that R four is no longer the highest-density residential district. There's a new density, a residential district, the R five, which has some of the characteristics and the dimensional standards that was in the R thirty-two.
But the RM twenty-four essentially becomes the same thing as the RM thirty-two.
They both would convert to the R four, yes.
So in terms of the impact of the use within this neighborhood, it's the same result as whether you have RM twenty-four or RM thirty-two, because they both become M four. Is that correct?
Yes and no, because it is a different ask. There was no R thirty-two, RM thirty-two on the property already. This is a different ask where they have two zoning designations. So they have the inherent right to develop a portion of their property at RM twenty-four now, and they have the inherent right to develop a portion of their property at the R seven now. So that is a difference in the ask.
The difference in, okay. The difference in the ask, but.
And the difference in the evaluation as well. It's a different review.
The result is the same, though, in terms of how many units can go on that property.
Potentially, they still have to meet the dimensional standards for the district, so they may not be able to develop to the density that the maximum of R four would permit, if that makes sense.
And given the size of the neighborhood and the very mix of uses, the single-family, the duplex, and on the very western end, of course, there is the motel, and I think there's one apartment there that's three stories high, but that would be the only one that is as high as this one would be proposed, would be allowed to build.
Yeah, so those are RM twelve districts, I believe. So they have a little bit different restrictions as far as height and size go, as does the R four versus R three or R two. So R three would permit four stories as well as R four, which, so there's a kind of a merging of how the density transfers to the new code. Some elements of the, what we would think of as R fifteen or R twelve are present in the R four, and some elements of the RM thirty-two or RM twenty-four are now present. Portions of them, the dimensional standards are in R four, and portions of them are now over into the R five. So it's a little bit different.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be appropriate to pause and do a study of this neighborhood, because it provides already so many of the things we want in our neighborhoods? It's mixed uses, it's connectivity to commercial places. It's a hospital that we don't know how much space it's going to need in the future, but we need to be looking at its space and the relationship between it and the surrounding residential areas.
So staff can only analyze the requests that come in at the time under the code that we have, so.
Fair question.
Yeah.
I'll ask that question another time, another way. But in terms of the character of the neighborhood, I share your interest and your concern because I think we've got so much in that neighborhood that we want to preserve and we want to make it available. It appears, I haven't checked any, with any Realtor, but it appears to me that it is a moderate neighborhood that's well-kept, well-used, it's well, more than 50% owner-occupied, based on the information we've researched. It's well, more than 50% owner-occupied, based on the information we've received in our packet. So there's a mix, a nice mix of ownership and rentals. And I, I just don't see how we can put this large thing in the middle, because it's essentially the same thing we had in October and thought that wasn't going to be a good, a good mix in the neighborhood in October. I, I don't think changing the request from RM32 to RM24 is really, I understand the efforts to try to improve on it, because at least for a short period of time, it'll be slightly less dense. But as of the 1st of April, it becomes the same density. And I, I would find it difficult to support.
Any other comments? Please, go ahead.
Did you want to go, Steve?
Yeah, I can jump in. I thought that was an interesting point that Commissioner Eldridge raised, as, as she often does. She went back to the file and assessed what has already come before us and brought that to bear on our conversations tonight, which I appreciate. So I just wanted to clarify and confirm one point there, that had we approved the application in October, that would be RM32 currently, tonight. But on April 1st, that converts to R4. We chose not to approve that application, and I believe it was unanimous at the time. This is now before us. We're considering changing it to RM24. The analysis is a little different, because as noted, RM24 is already on a portion of the lot. We could potentially approve this tonight, but then April 1st, we would end up in R4, which is where we would have ended up with the October application. Is all that accurate?
Yes. Yes.
Go ahead.
Are you finished?
Yep.
Just an observation. The, that giant swath of area, it's RM24. There's very few places inside that, that area that truly leverage all of the RM24 capacity that's available to them. And it strikes me as, as interesting, I find myself curious, how long it's been zoned, RM24? Because it seems to have just grown organically into this single-family dwelling neighborhood, very reminiscent, reminiscent of the RS7 area that's to its north. Maybe there's some R5 and maybe some R3 in there, or RS5, RS3, you know? But it certainly didn't take off, and, and, and gosh, with this, there's nothing very close at all, aside from, you know, across Michigan to the hospital, that has the kind of density that it is. The, the new code and the work on the new code is designed to provide opportunities for increased density, and there's a number of ways you can get at that. But it also recognizes how important it is to, specifically in redevelopment, what we're talking about here, even though it's an empty spot, but it's still inside of a neighborhood. In redevelopment, to really give weight to the character of the neighborhood that you're going to be doing new development in, redevelopment in. And man, if there was, if there was even, if there was anything remotely like that that was next to what we're doing, that would be kind of a stepwise approach to it. I'd have an easier time visualizing this without having a, a big impact to that neighborhood. This is very different from that. And just given how this neighborhood grew up on its own organically and how different this might be, my sense is that both old code, new code, and that, that number three point in our decision criteria on character of the neighborhood, it's impacted more than I'm comfortable with.
Right.
Is the character of the neighborhood, is it the houses, is it the people, or factoring in the way it's zoned? As you said, it's all, there's a chunk of it that is RM24. Things, just as you said, esoterically, over 50 years, never utilized that the way it could. But the applicant's asking for a small chunk of land to be zoned exactly like the large chunk of land that's right next to it.
Yeah. And it occurs to me that maybe it's consistent with your point, that all they would need to do is just acquire an adjacent lot south, and they could build by right without talking to us at all, the very thing that they imagined building. That's just not what's in front of me tonight.
I don't think the character of the neighborhood's the zoning. I think it's the use and the people and the dogs and the stolars and the lack of sidewalks.
I, I would agree with that perspective. In part, I would land there because our criteria lay those out as two distinct factors to consider. There's the zoning of the nearby properties, and then separately, there's the character of the neighborhood, which suggests it's not the same, that the character is something other than what a property is classified as on paper.
Is there, is there an option to consider something like an R3? Which would be not as dense, not as dense as R4, but...
So we do have the lesser change table, where you could consider a lesser zoning district. So that would be anything under the current RM24. So it would be RM12, RM15, RM12, and then whatever those would convert...
I see.
...to the new code.
I see. But that really would be up to the applicant, right? That's not, that's not, right? I mean, we don't want to do something that the applicant doesn't want, correct?
I think it would benefit the applicant if you were to ask that question, but yeah. You do have the option.
Okay.
You do have the option, but you know, that may not be of the applicant's wish or where they see the project ultimately go. So we can't speak on behalf of them, but there is that code option available to you.
Okay. I'm going to ask the applicant if that's something we should consider. Like an RM15, would RM15 be something you'd consider?
I would have to ask the client.
Sure.
And then, I don't know if there's any guarantee...
Right.
...that I'm not standing up here with the same character of the neighborhood.
Right, I understood.
And I'm not really sure I'll be standing up here with, talking about character of the neighborhood for the rest of my life. So I really don't know how, I don't know how to answer that now.
I want to find something that works in that property, right? I mean, that's not vacant, you know?
Sure.
Is, is sort of not being used, so we need houses. But we also want to take into account what the neighborhood looks like. So I'm trying to find a compromise.
Sure, and there's, there's a lot to weigh, because with, with the 33% of it, which would put it, we'll call it 15,000 square foot of that lot, is going to roll over to R4. So I would have to look real hard at R4 and just see what, you know?
Right.
Talk to my client and just see what...
Right.
What, what direction he'd want to go.
Right.
And I think in R4, you can even go up and...
Sure.
There's parking, things, things are changing, so...
Right. Would it hurt you if we went to RM15 tonight? I mean, I mean, what I'm saying is, is like, you get to, you know, you, it doesn't hurt you in the sense that we're getting more density than what is there today, right? Theoretically.
Well, I'd be losing the...
Well, that's true. Your arm, you...
So I mean, if you want to, if you talk about the R7 to, to the RM15, which RM15 becomes R3, yeah, so it...
Is that, go ahead.
I think we'd be creating the same situation, where we'd have adjoining lots with different zoning. And that, that's the part of the problem.
Would that be, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
I think that's the one thing staff's trying to work on right now and understand, is, is the rezoning only applicable to the portion of RS7? Because if the legal description is only written for the portion of the property that is RS7 going to RM24, then you can't really lesser change something that already has a zoning district on it. So that, that's the question we're trying to resolve right now, is what is the legal description that's submitted exactly corresponding to? And that's a little hard to do mid-meeting, I will be completely honest on that. So that is an option that's available on that. We're trying to figure out that detail to you. But I would say, is you, really, the question is, if the description is only pertaining to the part that is in RS7...
Yeah.
Then that would be available for lesser change at that point, but the remaining would stay at the district it is currently at.
Stay at 24, right. So the RS7 would go... What do you think?
Well, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with...
Let's just talk about this, talk this through, yeah.
Just pulling something out of the air without, an applicant actually asking for that.
Yeah, it sounds like the applicant wants to, wants to talk to the...
Yeah, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable...
Yeah.
...doing that compromise.
Sure, sure. So would this be a situation, Jeff, where we would defer, or you think it's better, better to just vote it down? You know, it seems, it seems like it's going to get voted down, from, from, from what I can tell. I don't know, I don't want to speak for the commission, but do, what do you, what do you reckon, what do you think? What are our options here?
You do have the option to, to go to a vote if you would so choose. You also have the option to defer the item, so you can, you know, allow the applicant more time to converse, or also to have staff do more research on a particular aspect of the, of the project, let us figure out what is in the legal description. So there are options there on that one. You could take a motion and vote, or you can defer the item, you know, to a date in the future.
What, what do you think?
Probably that. This is interesting, I've been involved in a lot of interesting situations, and this is interesting because with the dual zoning...
Right.
You're designing a building that has so many units on this side of this imaginary line, and so many units on this side of the imaginary line.
Right.
And then, oh boy, I don't even know, I don't even know what that looks like.
Do we vote on deferral?
Correct. It'd be a motion to defer the item, and it would have to carry with a majority.
Okay. So it, it could take some time to get back here, but, you know, okay, all right.
So just maybe test, testing...
Please. Test, test the, yeah.
Test the interest of...
Yeah, would, would, yes, I made an assumption there.
Test the interest of the commission in an R3.
In an R3.
In that solution, not just a deferral, but...
Right, right. When it comes back, when it comes back, yeah. Yeah, any, any thoughts on what Commissioner Rexrode just said? Like, would we entertain R3 for the RS7 portion, no, the RM, yeah, the RS7 portion, the RS7 portion?
It's going to go to R2.
It's going to go to R2, would we entertain R3?
Which would bring both parcels to R3, is that right?
No.
No, one's R4.
One is R4, one is R3.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we're still split parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I think is a solution.
Yeah. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it still exposes this area to the very thing that I had a concern about. And I'm, I'm usually, let's go. But in this case, the way this grew up over the decades and the impact of this, I, I personally don't think that that's the right solution.
So you, you would say, you would say vote it down? Or...
I wouldn't support a deferral for that reason.
Right, for that reason, okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I, I wouldn't support a deferral.
You wouldn't support a deferral? Sounds like...
I would support a deferral if that's what the applicant is asking for, and if the applicant comes back with a split three, R3 and R4, and they have a reason for and a design thought about it, I would consider it then, at that time. I also think this is zoned R24 at the moment, and I'm, I'm not as hesitant as the rest of the commission to actually approve the request currently as it is, so that's just where I'm at.
I would also support the deferral. Would you support the deferral?
I would support the deferral, assuming the applicant is okay with it, and would, or would lean towards approval...
Yeah.
...as it is.
Yeah. Do we, let's ask that question first. So I, I'm leaning towards approval. So would, you're leaning towards approval? You're leaning towards approval? So we have three votes, four votes, out of, is that, is that pass?
No.
No, that would tie. That would tie.
Right. Under the code, Becky, we'll double check, because we're going here, but under the code, a tie is effectively a denial under...
Okay. So, so it looks like, so, and then what about for the deferral? Do we have, how many votes do we have for the deferral if we did that? So I, I'd say deferral. You would defer to. Commissioner Munch, would you not support it? Would you support, you'd support the deferral?
Yeah.
Three, four, same, same, we'd have the same situation again.
No, you're 5-3 on deferral.
Are we, are we 5-3?
Two, three. You were yes on deferral? Yes on deferral? Jane?
No.
No, she's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's not, she's not, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, so that leaves us with, should we just vote straight on the item and call it good? Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I have a point of order, I just have a question. Is that how that works? So the applicant has kind of implied that they'd like a deferral and do, but kind of at our prompting? So like, is this kosher for us to like, vote on a deferral? Or if an applicant requests a deferral at this stage, how does that work? I just don't know how that works.
Typically, if something like, we run into situations like this, the commission's always had the practice of asking the applicant, you know, were you okay taking a deferral to resolve some of the open questions so that we can hear the item on that one? So it's, it's not normal, you don't see it in very many cases, but typically, the commission intended to practice in that way.
But that would be because the commission has requested it, not because the applicant has raised it. That's my only concern. I don't want to be doing any, I didn't know if we should be deferring to anything due to the applicant, but because the commission raised it, the deferral, we should just move forward the way we're moving forward.
Correct. Your bylaws allow you to defer for the gathering of information or for clarity on the item at that point.
Thank you.
So tell me what you just said, I'm sorry, like...
We can move forward with the motion for, either way. We can do either way. We, we don't have to worry about not taking a vote on deferral.
Okay. So we, are we, are we discounting the applicant's preference for a deferral at this point?
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, but are we? I mean, that's a question for the commission, I'm just asking. Like, it sounds like the applicant would like some time.
Well, the applicant does have time, I mean, depending on which way this goes, to come back with another proposal.
Denial here doesn't stop, they can always take it to the city commission.
Yeah, so...
Okay. All right. You can go to the city commission, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we deny it here tonight, it still could go to the city commission?
It would, it would still proceed to the city commission and, and go forward on that.
Okay. All right. Let me ask for a motion then. Sorry, go ahead.
I'll, I'll make the motion to defer.
You make a motion to defer?
Based on the October findings, and the findings in the staff report in October.
Okay. Okay. So essentially, what you're saying is, can you just say defer? Or do you, because I mean, because I, because I don't know that we can tie it to the staff report without having the staff report here, you know what I mean? Like...
I mean, defer or deny?
Yeah, I know my motion was deny.
Oh, you said defer.
Yeah, you said defer.
Did I?
You said defer.
I need to go home and go to bed.
I was like, wait.
I'm very sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so you're making a motion to deny, right? Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for that?
To deny.
Okay, we have a second. All right. Any discussion? Excuse me. Do you have a discussion? Please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that in my mind, this was a, a close call, that, running through the criteria that we're supposed to apply when considering a request for rezoning. I agree with staff's conclusions on most of the points, but the one that, that sticks out of my mind, as has been discussed, is the, the character of the neighborhood. And I just...
Yeah.
Regardless of everything else lining up, and especially the oddity of, of this lot amidst a, a neighborhood that's zoned one way but used another, taking all of that into consideration, I would, I, it's a close call, but focusing on, on the character of the neighborhood, I'm going to vote to deny.
Yeah, I, I walk the neighborhood too, and, and I agree with what you said, Commissioner Ashworth. I mean, it's, it's single-family homes. But I, I think the developer has really made an effort to create something that, it may not be the perfect thing for that site, but I think the, the developer really has, has an idea that, that to me sounds attractive. So I'm kind of disappointed, but, you know. Go ahead, you, sorry.
Well, just if I could add a little bit of commentary, I mean, one of the other criteria was sort of harm to one party or the other. And I, I really think there are other options for this site, for the developer. I mean, we have, with the new, change in the density code, the land development code, you know, there's, there's duplexes, there's affordable density, there's ADUs, there's you know, there's, there's duplexes, there's affordable density, there's ADUs, there's a lot of other options. So, I don't think it's doing undue harm to deny.
Sure. You're going to ask for a vote, all in favor, oh, in favor of denial? All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the opposite? Thank you.
In, in the instance there, we would ask you reverse that vote and run it the opposite direction there, because you do, when the commission gets to this point, is you're going to have effectively nothing on there, so if the commission would entertain, please reverse that motion.
Okay, so essentially, say, say, I mean, tell me what I should say.
So, I recommend approval of the request to rezone is what you need us to say, and then have to vote.
Okay, got you, got you.
I recommend approval of the request to rezone Z-25-000, or 0001, approximately 0.69 acres located at southwest corner of West 3rd Street and Michigan Street from RS7 District to RM24 District, or to the extent that the 2024 Land Development Code goes into effect on April 1st, 2025, from R2 District to R4 District, based on the findings presented in the staff report and forward to the city, and forwarding the request to the city commission with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All against?
Nay.
Motion failed.
It's a tie vote. Under, under the code, what it's basically doing is it's authorizing the commission to send it with no recommendation...
No recommendation.
...in that instance there. Thank you for entertaining that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I speak? Is, are we on to city commission?
Correct.
Since we got a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the public, thank you to the applicant. Thank you, Catherine.
Jeff, what is, what's the effect at the city commission level of no recommendation as opposed to a positive or a negative?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I couldn't hear your question.
What's the effect at the city commission level of a no recommendation versus a positive or a negative recommendation?
I'd have to double-check, I don't have that off the top of my head. If, if the city commission would want to vote contrary to you, it changes the voting aspect of what it is. I'd have to double-check and see what a no recommendation does, and in that instance, I do not know just instantly.
I don't know either.
I thought it had to be, we'll talk about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess...
Okay.
I think it's actually an important question because, because how it leaves here, and I think what you're saying is, it shows city, do they need three votes or four votes? That's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
If it goes to no recommendation, it only requires three votes, that's the same as an approval. Well, there's, hey...
If, if I may, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. If there's no recommendation, it goes to the city commission, and then a simple majority, one way or the other, would, would rule the day. Because if you're not making a recommendation, there was not enough votes to approve, there was not enough votes to deny, so it's going forward as no recommendation.
Thank you.
Good, good.
So, if we had had a majority of the people, we did, don't you make a motion to deny, and then it goes forward as a motion to deny, and wouldn't that then switch their vote?
No.
No, because it's still a no recommendation.
No, it's still a recommendation.
Either one of them, 4-4.
It's still 4-4.
There have been...
That was the, that was the reason why Jeff asked you to vote both ways. So, neither motion passed, so it's not, it's going with no recommendation forward. We've had issues in the past where we only voted on one side, and it was difficult to determine going forward, so we, we put that in, oh, I don't know, a year ago, two years ago, to make sure that you have no recommendation, and, and to make sure that the city commission has a, a, a decision to make, you know, their decision, so...
So, there is no such thing as passing it on with a tie vote?
That's, that's correct.
Recommend denial. All right. Any other discussion? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to...
I'd like to raise that question again about, about a neighborhood plan for, because I think this is the most interesting neighborhood in terms of what the various pieces are.
Yeah.
And I think that development is going to continue to occur.
Sure.
And I was impressed with both the developers representative wanting to get to a plan, and the number of people who said, let's talk, we need to talk about this, we need to get it done.